Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this council meeting to order. This evening, we have Fabia Gonzalez, who is here from the King School of Vocal, and she is going to be singing our national anthem. I would invite everyone who are able to stand.
(singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Aitavale, de foit trompei. Protégera, no foiers et no droid. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[147.19][147.19](applause)
Thank you very much, Fabia. That always acapella is very welcome here. It's been moved by Councilor Davy and seconded for the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 24, 2013, and special meetings held June 24 and August 12, as mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We have two good news stories to share with you this evening. And the first is that you'll notice that the seat to my left is vacant tonight. Normally, seating there is Councilor Kelly Galloway-Seelock, and she gave birth to a son on August 15, Caitlin William-Seelock, and so we wish her well. She is obviously not here for very good reasons this evening, and we will be making accommodations to work with her for future council meetings and committee meetings as well. And the second item of good news is just a congratulatory comment to the Tri-City -- from the Tri-City Slow Pitch B-division champs and the City Slickers, who are essentially our city staff, won that tournament yesterday, and they were very proud of that, and so I've sent off a little congratulatory email to them. One of the items that council will recall that we talked about a little earlier today, and that was when what is the appropriate time for members of council to declare any conflicts of interest, pecuniary conflict of interests under that act? And while it is not in our printed agenda, we will probably be putting it there as a reminder at the beginning of each of the meetings, so that if anyone has had a conflict of interest on an item that is on the agenda this evening, or -- and, rather, if a conflict of interest was declared on an item that was handled in the caucus meeting just prior to this, this would be the public declaration to state that. And I understand there are two people who wish to do that. Councilor Einaitis, first.
I'd like to declare my pecuniary interest in -- under the items from Finance and Corporate Service Committee, item number one pertaining to the downtown VIA, item number two pertaining to the financial incentives for downtown, and I'm not sure which -- the third item, which is the Centre Block Resolution, I'm not sure which one that falls under.
That'll become under Committee of the Whole?
Committee of the Whole, then.
And this is because?
Because I have property within the Centre Block.
Okay. Councilor Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and due to a pecuniary interest due to real estate that I or my parents own related to item in Financial Corporation Services Committee for number two, that's the downtown incentives, along with the item that was discussed in camera as to lands owned by a city Kitchener where I have property in close proximity to that discussion, and also, lastly, for utility accounts for item number eight and 26.
Okay, so noted. Councilor Fernandez, the same.
Yes, I have to declare a pecuniary interest as well on item 8B with regards to the motion that Councilor Dan Graham-Graham is bringing forward regarding sod replacement. My son lives within those streets that that would be affected by.
So we'll move on with the agenda, then. First item is we have a presentation by Mike Maurice of Sustainable Waterloo Region. Welcome, Mike. And just for everyone's knowledge, we -- this afternoon, we had a demonstration and an education session related to the new webcasting and simulcasting that we will be doing of council meetings and committee meetings. They are working -- our staff is working on this in a pilot arrangement right now. So this council's meeting this evening is being recorded, and depending on how that pilot goes, as they work through the timing and the edits and putting subtitles to it and that sort of thing, it may be posted on the website at some future time. So just so that everyone is aware that that is in the process. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor Zaire and council for having me this evening. I'm back here again this year, as I have been in past years and with other councils across the region, to give you a broad strokes update on the sustainability network across Waterloo Region, as well as what you can expect from Sustainable Waterloo Region over the next year. So give you a brief overview of our three programs we're still operating across the region, of which the city is a participant in each of these three. The first, the Regional Carbon Initiative, you're all well familiar with, that is helping organizations to set targets to reduce their carbon impact, and really giving them access to a network and the direction and supports that they need to work towards doing so. Now up to -- we started this in 2009 with three organizations, 10 by the end of the first year. The city supported efforts to continue to grow it up to 45 the year after. This map shows you a sense of the 63 organizations across our community that have set targets or are working towards doing so. They employ 13% of the workforce across our community, and they occupy 16 million square feet of heated space, each of which are not just putting a logo up, but instead actually setting their intention to set a target to reduce their carbon impact, or in some cases, they've already done so. In the past year alone, 20 new organizations have joined this program. Five of them have switched from observing with intention to actually becoming what we call a pledging partner of having set a target. Some of those organizations are on this slide here. Crawford &amp; Company is a Kitchener-based organization that most recently set a 25% target to reduce their carbon impact, and all of this would be in the report you each received in the mail or at the Evening of Recognition a few months ago. The rest of these slides show you the rest of the participants over the past year. The city of Kitchener has been a participant for the past couple of years now alongside growing, in fact, the largest number of Regional Carbon Initiative members are Kitchener-based. The city is at the second step of four that we support organizations and working through towards setting a target. That step is setting an inventory of your current carbon impact across your corporate-owned operational carbon footprint. The next step would be setting an action plan, and then the fourth, setting a target. And those that have made progress towards this, we've seen consistently, the more dedicated resources available to be able to get this process moving forward, which is part of the city's FCM commitment through PCP, that is always helpful. To give you a sense of the contributions to this program and the leverage of funding from the private sector, comparing to a similar program operating out of Toronto, the total municipal contributions of program funding through membership fees from each of the cities and the region amounts to 5.7% of the total funding of the program. And these two pie charts give you a sense of how that compares to similar programs operating in other communities. PPG stands for Partners in Project Green, based out of Toronto. And this, of course, a number of councillors were at the Evening of Recognition, over 400 people this year. Thanks for those of you that were there, and those that weren't, you got a copy of the report in the mail as well. The second program to give you an update on that the city's been a partner on since we started it is Climate Action WR, moving away from the city's operational carbon footprint to the community-wide carbon footprint. Really exciting to see our area municipalities working together to, again, get an inventory of our community-wide carbon footprint. It's 4.6 million tons, and then with that, start to look at creating an action plan and setting a target. Really glad to be working with staff on this, and they'll have an update for councils in the fall. To give you a sense of program funding again for this, the leverage on this program, for every dollar the city's put in, has been matched with $46 of outside funding to allow us, as a community, to follow through in our PCP commitments through FCM and work towards setting a target and getting an action plan for a community-wide carbon footprint. The last program to give you a brief update on is Travel Wise. The city was part of the initial pilot two years ago, continues to do so, and really look -- really excited. This past year, we grew it out. This is still the Regions program. We provide support for it, but moved it from four organizations that were initially getting support on their employees, getting access to discount bus passes and car ride matching software, up to 20 organizations now that are getting support to help their employees moving away from driving to and from work in their cars alone. So that's some of the progress from this past year. To give you a sense for what you can expect from us, another thank you. There were several councillors that gave input to our strategic planning process from the past year that I mentioned when I was here around this same time, as we're charting a direction going forwards, trying to be very focused while very impactful. This is the result of that. You can continue to expect of us to foster collaborations across this community that help organizations to move from having just an interest in sustainability to action, and specifically helping them to build a network, to learn from each other, to set direction, then to report back on the results of what's been done. On this slide here, some of the ideas we've heard from many of you, other councillors, business leaders across the region, and each of these, I'd be glad to speak with you more about at the right time. Last one, to give you a brief update, we're now up to 12 communities across Ontario alone who've come to us to say, what is going on in Waterloo Region, and can we have some version of this in our communities as well? This map gives you a sense of those. They're looking for the Regional Carbon Initiative specifically, and understanding better how they can help businesses in their communities to set targets to reduce their carbon impact. We've taken a few years of this now, and have written a business plan and are getting ready to launch a provincial organization whose role it'll be to do exactly that, to take this social innovation from our community and to share that with others, and in so doing, learn from what they then innovate on top of that and bring that back here. And so for those of you who might have heard, I'm going to be transitioning in the fall. I'm not going too far. I'm going to continue to live and work in this community, and my focus will shift to take the Regional Carbon Initiative specifically and continue, as I mentioned, to share that with other communities. Our hope is to start with three by the end of this year and get a better sense for whether this is a program that might be successful in other communities across the province. We should have a new executive director selected by the end of September, at which point you'll be hearing all about that, and I'll be really excited to share that with you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer that now, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Councilor Einaitis?
Thanks, Mike, for coming in and, you know, doing all the great things that you do and your passion for the environment and everything else is outstanding. I just want a little more of a clarification, because you did mention that you did get 23 new organizations from last year or this year. Can you just give me a sense of idea of what types of organizations, like are they small, medium, large?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. One of the strongest aspects of the program so far is the diversity of the participants. And so if you look on these slides here, it's two of the three hospitals, two of the three universities, two of the three utilities, so a lot of mush. At the same time, Challenger is one of the most recent participants, manufacturing, high-tech. A large majority are larger employers. Insurance is one sector in particular. Eight of the 10 biggest insurance companies across our community are now Regional Carbon Initiative members. Manulife, Sun Life, OTIP, Economical. And so that's been one sector in particular that we've seen a lot of interest in setting a target to reduce their carbon impact from. Construction is one that most recently, we've had two new participants from, and high-tech, of course, is another one. We've seen some good support. In terms of the sizes of the organizations, then another exciting part, you'll see some that are five, 10 people operating out of a small office. A large majority are SMEs, and then quite a few are some fairly large employers. Now, I want to be careful. It's only 13% of the workforce. I said at the Evening of Recognition, I think we're on the cusp of something really special here. I think we're nearing that tipping point. Some sectors, manufacturing, for example, we've got two total. So I don't want to oversell some of the success so far, but I think we've -- the value of the network is so much stronger now than it was three years ago because of the number of participants and how much they've already learned these past five years. Approaching a business today is much easier when there's such a strong community practice already in place.
Well, you know, that sounds -- that sounds great, and 13%, I think, is -- it's a significant number, so that's a big accomplishment, and you should be proud of that, and congratulations on your new role and all the best. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor Fernandez?
Thank you, and thanks, Mike, for bringing in all the hard work that you and your group do. And I was just going to write out my question, but I'll wing it now. You've got a -- we've kind of joking about all the people sitting in the gallery, and so you've got a big captive audience. You know, recognizing that you're working with industry, it might be an interesting selling point at this time to let people know how their industry -- I mean, all of these people probably have jobs somewhere in this community, and maybe they need to encourage their employers to join this Regional Carbon Initiative and to help reduce the greenhouse gases that we are emitting today and every day.
Take a 30-second commercial here.
30-second commercial.
Thank you, Mayor Zaire. I'll put it simply. The reason the businesses participate, for the most part, is because there's a clear business case for them to do so. And to the extent that residents across our community encourage their employers to have an environmental strategy of some kind, to the extent that they look at the products that they buy and do so based on the environmental impact of that organization and the real action that that organization is taking, I think that's the real empowering part of the ways in which our economic system can be used to reflect our values. And as those values evolve and as we shift to an understanding that values that, I think it'll be in our collective best interest. And groups like ours are simply providing the information to allow others to understand the progress being made in a credible way.
And I'm going to give a little tiny example that I thought was so impressive at the night of recognition, and that was one of the employers whose employees were now bringing their own cutlery to their workplace to reduce on the amount of plastic and dishwashing. You bring it, you keep it at your own desk, and I thought -- and some of them actually were giving it as a gift to the new employees, and I thought that's just a very small little start of how we can see a way to reduce our carbon initiative. And I know that you support all those kinds of really great and creative ideas, so thank you.
Absolutely. I think it's those incremental steps that get us there, that's the path that this community is on, that this city has been a big part of supporting these past few years. I didn't get a chance to mention the total impact so far. I failed to mention it. Our community's set targets to reduce their carbon impact by 45,000 tons. It's about 10,000 cars off the road every year. It's a great start, and this city, by participating in the Regional Carbon Initiative and your leadership in Climate Action WR, puts you in a great position to build on the incremental wins that our business community is seeing and kind of take it to the next level, and I'm excited for that.
Great. Thank you, and good luck with your new position.
Thank you.
Okay, those are the only questions or comments. Mike, congratulations to you as well, Mike, and best wishes.
Thanks for your support. Thanks.
Okay, and there are three people here who are in the audience who are just here to answer questions, and normally, we don't have questions for these. I'm going to quickly bring these forward. They are under Committee of the Whole. They are items that were part of the committee adjustment for fence and sign. It's on page two of the blue pages, items four, Roman numerals three, four, and five. Are there any questions on any of those? Someone prepared to move that? Councilor Rivanovic, seconded by Councilor Yenetsky. Those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. So that's Cory Natalie Pieron, Alandra Leschner, and Ina Vadanovich, if I had that close to correct. So we dealt with those items, and they have been approved. We'll now go back to the order of on our agenda, and the next item is related to Victoria Park. There are five delegations, some of whom are listed and others are not. I would remind everyone that you have just five minutes to make your presentation, and the -- we'll be automatically keeping that time, and the microphone goes dead at the end of five minutes, so you want to plan your timing. John Dinner is the first delegate. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Your Worship, and Members of Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is John Dinner. My wife and I moved into the Victoria Park area almost exactly three years ago. We've lived in Kitchener for a little more than 28 years, and I've been asked by some of my neighbors just to come this evening and share some of the points of discussion that we've been having about the traffic in our neighborhood. I think I could speak on behalf of most of my neighbors. Where we live is just an amazing experience. It's just a wonderful place to call home. And as I know, you're more than aware, there's been lots of changes in our neighborhood over recent years. I think I can speak also on behalf of my neighbors. I just want to commend council on its vision and investment in the Victoria Park area as well as downtown, and it's just great to be a part of that, living there and being able to contribute to the successful, I guess, rejuvenation of that part of the city. I'm here not on my own. I did mention I'm here representing a bunch of my neighbors, and there's a whole bunch of us here, so I just ask you to just sort of stand so that council has a sense of who's here with me, and as Mayor Zaire mentioned, there's some others who will also be speaking. Some of the changes that I mentioned, you know, we welcomed wholeheartedly, and we've had to adapt a bit, but we've certainly been beneficial -- or beneficiaries, rather, of many of those. There've been some other changes that perhaps we've had to accommodate more than others, but we recognize, I think, being basically a reasonable bunch of individuals, that it's for the betterment of the community as a whole, and so we try to accommodate and support as best we can. But we finally come to an issue, I think, where we feel compelled to come this evening to raise some concerns, and in brief, the concern is really about the growing volume of -- volume, rather, of city maintenance vehicles located at the Victoria Park Maintenance Facility that are actually being used outside of our neighborhood, outside of Victoria Park proper, and the resulting noise, traffic, other negative implications for residents living on or near David, Dill, Schneider, and other area streets. So there's many reasons for concern. Each resident, each of my neighbors, is impacted in different ways and to varying degrees, based, to some degree at least, on personal circumstances, and some of these concerns will be raised by the others who will follow me. I think all of these concerns are in and of themselves legitimate. They should be addressed on their own, but as a group, I think we would agree together that there's a larger issue at play, one that we think should be of concern to all residents of Kitchener, not just those of us who happen to reside in the Victoria Park area. It would be our contention that heavy and other maintenance equipment belongs in industrial or other non-residential areas, not in or near Victoria Park, particularly given its heritage designation, or in any other residential neighborhood for that matter, really as a matter of principle. Locating the central operations facility on Goodrich Drive, I think, is really recognition of that principle, and was a result of extensive study and consultation, again, as you're far more aware than I am. As stated on the city's website, the objective of the central operations facility was to bring a number of city operations and services under one roof, and we think relocating equipment to the Victoria Park for use outside of the park proper appears to go against the premise for that central operations facility. You know, we recognize there are probably practical reasons for making that shift. There's no doubt some efficiencies, proximity to where that equipment is used or whatever, but we do not believe that those are satisfactory reasons that should trump the essential principle of keeping such equipment from being located in residential areas. We also understand there's been some steps taken to try and divert some of the traffic or the movement of equipment in our neighborhood, but we don't believe that those solutions sort of satisfactorily address the core principle of keeping that kind of equipment out of residential areas.
You have 40 seconds.
There's a -- we're representing also a number of other individuals by petition. 113 individuals were approached, 105 signed a petition supporting our concerns, so we would, without question, our neighborhood is fully behind this issue. So while it may be more cost-effective, efficient for the city to locate some of its equipment closer to where it's used in the downtown core, we're asking council to address this issue this evening by taking the necessary action to relocate maintenance and other related vehicles not specifically needed for maintaining Victoria Park proper. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Five seconds to go.
Say.
That's good. Councilor Yenetsky?
Thank you for coming in, making your presentation. Just a couple of short questions. How many vehicles would you see going by? You really only have one way in, is via David Street, and then you can exit via David or Schneider, basically. And that's the only way?
And down Dill Street is the other one.
Yeah, but you've still got to get back to Queen or?
That is correct.
Cartland, basically.
That's correct.
So how many vehicles, truck vehicles, would you see going by there every day?
If I could defer that to another speaker, because I know one of my neighbors has actually done some work to it. Try and answer that very question.
Okay. I'll leave my questions there, because my next question would be related to that as well. Thank you.
Councilor Gazola?
I actually have some questions of staff, just a little one for...
We'll perhaps wait for those questions until after all the delegations have been heard.
That's fine, but I do -- you said that you approached 113 people for your petition here, and you said 105 signed?
Yes.
The other eight, were they opposed, or they did?
Two declared a conflict, and the others refused to sign for some reason or other.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Etherington?
Yeah, John, what would you like to see council do about the problem? Do you have any suggestions to solve that issue? I mean, do you want them to move the vehicles back to Bram, or what suggestion would you have?
Well, I'm not an expert in this area, so I know the technical expertise exists within the city, so I wouldn't try to suggest solutions for which I can't really provide that kind of expertise, but I think that that may be an option. I think there's probably several options. I guess, based on principle, though, I just don't believe that that equipment belongs where it is, and we recognize that there is a certain amount of equipment that is required for maintaining Victoria Park, and so that's absolutely appropriate. It's using that facility for other purposes where our concern is, and I suspect there's any number of solutions.
Thank you. And, John, would you say in general, residents in the park, like yourself and elsewhere in the park, were they content with the volume of traffic that was there before Bram Street closed?
Well, I think because of the wonderful work that's gone on in Victoria Park, there's been a significant increase in traffic on the part of those who are just coming to enjoy the park, and the way the streetscape has been changed has certainly had an influence on that. So if you talk... So if you talk about overall traffic, it has increased regardless, and so to then exacerbate that situation with maintenance and other vehicles, I think is adds to the pressure that's already being placed on the neighborhood.
And I don't know whether you want to field this question, but how would you, how do you differentiate the, between this traffic, the city vehicle traffic, and other traffic on your street?
Well, I think we're accepting of the other traffic, and we look at city vehicles and recognize them and say, that's discretionary, and that's a decision by the city to relocate equipment there, so that's a decision that, that's a choice.
Okay, thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say I'm going to have some other questions, comments, and then when, if there's an opportunity, I have a motion to suggest for council after the discussion.
Okay, we'll come back to you as well. Thanks very much, John.
Thank you.
Next delegation is Dominique Whalen, here in, speaking for Paul Strangways.
Good evening, Mayor Zaire, councilors. My name is Dominique Whalen, and I live at 51 Schneider Avenue in the park. I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm going to be speaking to the point that a city maintenance vehicle depot is not appropriate for a civic park, and even less so for a district heritage park. I moved to Kitchener 14 years ago into the park. I enjoy living there hugely, and in the time, I've seen a number of changes that come to the park. One example would be, since I've moved there, there's the addition of four new festivals, the Blues Festival, Beer and Ribs, Link, and the Human Estate was at it. Another major change is the lake reconstruction. I mean, that was a very long, noisy, dirty, and occasionally smelly process, but we're at the end of it, and the park is beautiful, and certainly a lot of the residents are enjoying it. Living on Schneider, as I am, just, I think it's north, although I have to say, I'm never quite sure, in Kitchener. North between the pavilion and David Street, there certainly is a lot of traffic that flows by my door. I mean, one trade-off to the increased enjoyment in foot traffic and vehicular, I mean, it's wonderful to see the basketballs bouncing down the road, and the watercraft in the park, and certainly the yoga in the park has attracted people, but one trade-off for all of that is the additional noise and congestion that that brings. And I mean, we're all very aware of the benefits of living in the park. We simply live in the largest park in Kitchener, and therefore the largest number of people who go through there. And we also know it peaks in the summer and weekends, so there's kind of a beginning and an end in sight to that. One change that I did note that does contribute additionally to the noise and congestion is the increased traffic from the city of Kitchener. Now, I have to confess, I'm a porch liver in the summer. I work from home, I sit on my porch, and I work from there, and I was very baffled by the increased number of vehicles that were flowing to and fro along Schneider Street and along David Pass Schneider in the park. And I spoke to my neighbors, and they appraised me on some of the information that John already told you in terms of the central depot and vehicles and so on. And having a business background and being a curious person, I thought, I'm going to do an account here. I don't know if it's statistically significant, however, I've certainly sat on my porch during the day and made note of the type and time vehicles went by. I'm not a morning person, so 6:30 didn't find me there, but my number, that was covered by other individuals on the group. And what we did come up with, that over, there are over 100 vehicles passing, so it might be the same vehicle going by 100 times, but it's just there's 100 city of Kitchener vehicles passing to and fro, and that's possibly understated because it doesn't take into account any vehicles that were not specifically identified as being with the city of Kitchener. Now, I am aware that there is an attitude which is, you live in the park, you benefit from the park, deal with the noise and traffic, kind of like a so, you know, too bad, so sad, suck it up, buttercup kind of attitude, and I'm aware of that, and for the most part, I agree. The noise, traffic, and congestion in the park is appropriate for the events and activities that take place there, and the residents deal with in different ways. They either join in, wear earplugs, or leave the city. I mean, you basically do what you can, and many of them do enjoy what's going on there. The noise and congestion from the vehicles is not appropriate. And to quote the tipping point again from one of our former Kitchener residents, Malcolm Gladwell, I think that we're there, and based on the petition, we speak for the community. The second point I want to add to that is there are some specific guidelines, because we live in a designated heritage area, there are guidelines and policies set out for Victoria Park. It's a very long acronym, so I'm just going to refer to it as the plan. It was approved by Kitchener City Council in 96 with the community actively involved. And forgive me if I'm talking fast, I timed myself and I have five minutes to spare. So the summary of the goals is primarily to conserve and enhance one of the most historic areas of the city of Kitchener, and they look at three aspects, physical, social, and economic, and I'm primarily going to deal with the physical. I believe another presenter is going to look at the social, particularly with the community involvement and any changes and decisions for the area. Now, I'm not going to go over, because it's, I brought it with me, very long plan, but they take into account buildings. Most people are aware that there are guidelines for individuals who live in the park in terms of maintaining or changing their house, but there's also into things for, in terms of conserving and enhancing the 18th century romantic landscape style, a naturalistic character to brighten unity, which is defined as intensely natural and untouched by man. Now, the goal for streetscape and lands basically is to enhance the community, but specifically for movement, the plan states that to ensure movement systems, particularly the road system, strengthen the quality of life in the area, because it does have a significant impact on the community. And ladies. Our wish is that we be able to move out of Kitchener, of the city of Kitchener area, and to set it on pace. Thank you for your time, and for turning the mic on.
Thank you. There may be one or two questions. Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, Dominique, just one quick question.
Sure.
In past months, I know that there have been attempts to divert traffic coming out of the yard in the park. From going down Dill to going down Schneider. It's pretty obvious, but why do you think that did not work?
Well, I have to say that my awareness of the traffic issue certainly was much lower before the diversion, because all of a sudden, traffic was streaming by, and I think, like, what was the change? And I understand that the traffic was diverted because Dill Street is the straight through onto David Street, so it requires perhaps a little more maneuvering, and just even walking my dogs around, I noticed that they would go along the park area and down Schneider. So that particular point is like, how many? I mean, I know at one point, I was talking on the phone, and I think three lawnmowers and a street sweeper went by within five minutes, and I really, I couldn't talk on the phone. In fact, even sitting in the backyard, I wasn't able to get away with it. So in terms of the diversion, I suspect it might have been somewhat calmer for the individuals on Dill Street, but as somebody mentioned, there really is only one way out of the park. Typically, I was assessed for those kind of vehicles, there was only one way in too, which is down David Street. It's a bottleneck, and the local streets are meant to serve the buildings that are in that area. They're not meant to carry through traffic, and the traffic calming measures that were implemented by the city in the past, such as the entrance only, no exit for Schneider, it recognized the fact, the policy that traffic calming measures measures to reduce the volume and noise of traffic in the Victoria Park area was important. I mean, it adds a little extra trip for people who live there, but ultimately, you don't have the stream of vehicles coming from downtown. So diverting, I think, is a temporary stopgap, might have given the people on Dill, you know, a little more peace perhaps, depending on where you live on the street. So I don't think that that was a really effective solution.
Okay, just to clarify for the benefit of council, that entrance exit of Schneider was onto Queen, right?
That's correct.
Because traffic was cutting through.
People were going along from downtown, I understand, to, along David and down Schneider to avoid the congestion at the Queen and Cortland. Now, that's my supposition. I don't need any more. I do know that shortly after that was changed, a traffic accident at the corner of, at Queen and Cortland, I think there was like 100 vehicles in an hour that went through there, so I guess, you know, that's the only way out of there. You do what you can.
Yeah, thank you.
Kalash Yanevsky?
Thank you for your presentation. I guess you're the lady with the statistics. My question basically comes down to, you live at 51 Schneider, is that between David and the park, or is that between David and Queen?
It would be, I would say between David. I live on the park between David and the park, if that was your question.
Yeah.
And vehicles that come in will go along David, and other proceed along, go up Dill or up Schneider, and the same for the reverse trip. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, because that's where I was leading to, is I was just wondering how much traffic is really passing by your house versus are they taking David over to Dill and out the back by the railway tracks there, so, and I just was wondering, that's both in and out, I would gather, is that correct?
That's correct. What I took note of, and what all of the individuals watching took note of, was vehicles that were both entering and exiting the park, so ones that would go David up Schneider, or that would go pass, go along David and pass Schneider's entrance, so that was all vehicles. Vehicles that were going along the trail would not be included in that.
Now, vehicles leaving the back of the property after, you know, would they come down Schneider, or would they all come down Dill and then over to David? Because sometimes there's a flow that I notice, people coming into the park, go up Schneider, you sort of go over to the back, and you sort of exit Dill to come back out to David.
Well, I'm certainly aware of the traffic, I mean, when the busier times, it's almost like a game of chicken that plays on Schneider, because it's really one way. So if you're at one end of Schneider, David going into the park, and there's another between the posts at the other end, whoever gets along that line first is the one that goes through, so occasionally people will gun it just to make sure they get through first, and if a vehicle gets caught, they have to turn into driveways. So as far as, I think it's almost six of one, half a dozen of the other, I mean, in terms of people coming in and going, I'm not sure what the parking is on Dill Street. I suspect it might be very similar in that it only accommodates so much. Now, admittedly, the major congestion is in the evening and on weekends, and certainly during, when festivals happen, it's quite busy. Any vehicles that go in and out of the park have, either are using the rail trail or going past an intersection, so our count sort of accommodates all of that. But I was also told that there might be some vehicles that were not specifically identified, i.e. either the Kitchener, city of Kitchener logo or emblem on them, and it's a whole multitude of white pickups. I've now learned that there are many, many kinds of such pickups that go up and down the park area, but there may be others that don't have that emblem. My assumption is that any very large lawnmowers and street sweepers are part of the city of Kitchener, so that was included in with the count as well.
So is most of the traffic from the city just Monday to Friday?
It's Monday to Friday, there are still, the count that I did was during the weekdays. I do know that there's traffic that happens both earlier than when I was out there and in the evening and on weekends. Now, at this point, I don't have, I could do a statistically significant study for a month and get that, but I'm sorry, I really can't answer what percentages in the evening or after hours.
Okay, and one last question. How long ago did this all start?
From my perspective, my awareness came into being when, with the diversion of traffic onto Schneider. I mean, there's the phrase, not in my backyard, I suppose when it doesn't happen in your backyard, you don't notice it as much, but when I noticed the stream, it was quite dramatic, and that's when I asked my various neighbors, like, what is going on? Obviously, I'm afraid I missed the central depot piece, so I was a little mystified as to what may or may not happen. I do know that I, my habits in terms of porch sitting are pretty consistent for the last 14 years, and I was totally boggled and baffled as to why this, what was this change, because...
So my question is, how long ago did this all start?
In my awareness, it was June, but my understanding is that this has happened over the winter and last fall, too. I think somebody else might be able to answer that in more detail.
Thank you. Okay, there are no more questions for you.
Thank you.
Next delegation is Leslie Clare.
Mayor Zaire, councilors, thank you for this opportunity to voice our concerns to you. I'm Leslie Clare of 166 David Street. I have lived at this address for 11 and a half years. I'm going to address the issue of the quality of our lives as being adversely affected by the noise, vibration, and exhaust fumes of these maintenance vehicles on a daily basis from 11:00 p.m. at night to late afternoon and sometimes into the early evening, almost while over 100 people have voiced their concerns. There's not time to address all quality of life issues discussed in these conversations. I will focus on loss of use of property, loss of sleep, loss of enjoyment of property, and loss of job performance. Many properties in the neighborhood are used to generate rental income, mine included. This spring, I received a formal complaint from a tenant concerning the impact of the noise of the maintenance vehicles on his use of property, specifically interference with his doctoral studies. As a landlord, I am bound by the Residential Tenancies Act of Ontario. That act specifically addresses the issue of loss of enjoyment and use of property, and it allows a tenant to break a lease due to such loss. My tenant left before his first year's lease expired. He had intended to stay four years. I lost an excellent tenant and some income. Sleep is a foremost use we make of our personal space. Noise from these vehicles has impacted both quality and duration of sleep for some residents, particularly shift workers. While I'm not a shift worker, I understand their complaint because I work irregular hours from my home during the night. Getting adequate sleep during the day used to be possible. Now, sleep after 6:15 a.m. is very difficult. Uninterrupted quality sleep is history. Sufficient sleep for proper sleep cycles is impossible with the consequent health, with the, you know what I mean. Critical points are reached regarding sleep loss, and that has occurred for some individuals. Mine occurred at the very beginning of July, when a water truck woke me at 7:15 a.m. on a Sunday morning, when I had planned to sleep as late as possible. This happened many Sundays, including yesterday. Neighbors have noted a further disruption of sleep, that being vibration caused by these vehicles. Loss of enjoyment of property? A neighbor pointed out that windows have to be closed to protect children with sound and respiratory issues. This is true also for some adults. Note, individuals with these sensitivities choose not to live on main thoroughfares such as Weaver Street, where you would expect this kind of traffic, but rather in quiet neighborhoods. Closed windows interfere with ventilation, a critical issue in summer but also spring and fall. Exhausts on many of the maintenance vehicles exceeds that allowed for cars. Individuals with respiratory issues have had to go indoors due to the irritation caused by the heavy fumes when vehicular passings are frequent, 100 times a day, sometimes they're every few minutes. This is a clear loss of enjoyment and use of property. A significant loss of enjoyment occurs concerning recreational activities chosen specifically for rest, relaxation, and rejuvenation. Neighbors have commented that they cannot even enjoy sitting on their porches at 7:00 a.m. because of the noise. Gardening is a popular activity. For me, creating beauty in my gardens has been my place of restoration and meditation, not this summer. The noise of the maintenance vehicles has intruded into my private space and restorative activity almost every time I've had time to work in my garden. My front garden has become a place city folk visit during lunch hour to meditate and enjoy. This summer, I have had far fewer garden visitors. Maintenance vehicle noise deserves, destroys the R&amp;R value of various activities for both residents and park visitors. This is a serious matter. It also interferes with social interactions. Dominique has referred to telephone conversation and other conversations being, you have to stop in the middle of conversations as these vehicles pass by, and that destroys the context of this total social experience and social context. So it happens in many different kinds of activities.
You have half a minute?
Oh, boy. Our homes are our private space. The noise, vibration, and fumes of these vehicles intrude into our private space with adverse effect and loss of what a home is meant to be. Insufficient sleep, insufficient R&amp;R affects job performance, relational effectiveness, including amongst neighbors, and personal functionality across cognitive, emotional, and physical factors. Personally, I have not been able to work effectively or keep commitment.
Can you wrap it up then? The sentence or two, please?
I have two sentences. The impact of these added maintenance vehicles has been significant to us in many ways. Diversion, while well-intended, has not worked, you can ask me. Please use the mandates and policies that you have to protect our neighborhood and park environment. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no questions, thank you very much. The next delegation is Kim Ruxton. The next delegation is Kim Ruxton. Welcome, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor Zare and councillors. My name is Kim Ruxton, and I've lived in the Victoria Park neighbourhood for seven years. I'm going to be addressing the issue of safety tonight. Victoria Park has been a family favourite of mine as it is an affordable and safe environment in which to bring children. The City of Kitchener website describes it well. "Victoria Park is the jewel of our city. Nestled in the heart of downtown and just a short walk from City Hall, the park is a haven of tranquility and recreation destination for residents and visitors alike, serving to enhance our thriving quality of life. The city and staff of Kitchener have done a wonderful job improving and maintaining the park. And we understand that this requires the use of vehicles and equipment. As residents of a park neighbourhood, we have the unique responsibility for the safety of not only our neighbours, but for the thousands of visitors that use our roads to enter and leave the park. We are ever vigilant for the distracted toddler chasing a ball or the five-year-old driving a bike for the first time. Whether on foot, on bikes, or in vehicles, thousands come to the creative playground and popular splash pad in Victoria Park. The relocation of the vehicles previously utilizing the Bram Street Depot into the park raises obvious safety concerns for the children travelling to and playing in close proximity to that lot. We should be decreasing the probability of injury and not increasing it by adding non-park-related trucks and equipment. There's an estimated 3,000 City of Kitchener vehicles passing right across the playground each month in the summer. As well as spoken by John, there was a diversion tactic used to help decrease the impact of the excess vehicles. And some of the vehicles were diverted down the Iron Horse Trail. Now, the use of the Iron Horse Trail by motorized vehicles is grave concern to the neighbourhood. We have seniors and disabled residents in wheelchairs utilizing the trail as a safe alternative to Queen Street and Highland Road to access shopping and doctor's appointments. The Iron Horse Trail is not a controlled avenue for motorized vehicles and is not an appropriate diversion. As residents, we feel we must ensure the safety of the vulnerable sector visiting and residing in our neighbourhood. Prevention is the solution. Prevention would require the city to remove and relocate all unnecessary city vehicles out of Victoria Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Anna Mast is the final speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Zare and city councillors. As Mayor Zare said, my name is Anna Mast, and I am one of the co-chairs of the Victoria Park Neighbourhood Association. I've spoken to you guys several times now, as well as a resident at 48 Schneider Avenue. I'm just across the road from Dominique, a little bit closer to David, between David and the park. As a representative of the Victoria Park Neighbourhood Association, I am here trying to, in general, we try to represent the interests of all of the residents of the neighbourhood. And I felt it was our duty to be here tonight to show support from throughout the neighbourhood regarding this issue. So the Victoria Park neighbourhood, as you know, is one of the oldest in the city, and it surrounds a park, which is often referred to by city publicity materials itself as "the crown jewel of Kitchener." And the residential neighbourhood around the park has become a very sought-after address for people from all walks of life who value heritage, natural beauty within an urban environment, and proximity to the lively downtown lifestyle while retaining a peaceful home environment. Significant time, money, and effort has been invested by the city over the past few years in the Victoria Park residential neighbourhood. The streets have been narrowed and reconfigured to reduce traffic volumes and speed. The lake was dredged and reconfigured to help maintain its beauty and usability. And the city did a really wonderful job during all of these changes of consulting with the neighbourhood and keeping us informed of progress or any unforeseen circumstances as the changes were implemented. The standard of excellent communication with the neighbourhood, however, was completely missed in the case of increasing the number of municipal vehicles that are being based out of Victoria Park maintenance facility. The neighbourhood residents were never informed that the maintenance facility would no longer just be used to house park vehicles, but those used all over the downtown core. The increase in loud work vehicle traffic along our narrow residential streets was a complete surprise to us. And the lack of consultation and disclosure is out of character for the city. It seems likely that we were not consulted because it seemed obvious that residents would never be on board with the changes for who would really agree to have a municipal workyard in the middle of a residential neighbourhood. Mention was made of some of the diversions that were done to try and help. And those of us who live close to the corner of Schneider and David, it doesn't really matter which street the vehicles are going up. If they're going up Dill, or they're going up Schneider, they're going past the corner of David and Schneider, which is right where I live. So I hear it regardless. I would also like to just point out that some of the older homes in our neighbourhood don't have air conditioning. So they're forced to during the summer keep their windows open if they want to have any ventilation whatsoever. And it's impossible to escape the noise in that case. And for those of us who aren't porch sitters, some of the changes kind of snuck up on us a little bit. We've had a lot of traffic in the park in the past five years that I've lived there anyway because when I moved there shortly after, we had our streets dug up. There was all sorts of traffic for that. And then during the lake dredging, there was tons of traffic. And it's sort of only now that we are starting to, those of us who don't sit on the porch all day are sort of realising, "Oh, wait a second. That traffic should have, the big vehicle traffic should have dropped off." And it never did. So the petition that's been presented by my neighbours here this evening gives ample proof, in my opinion, that the vast majority of the neighbourhood feels that this really is an issue worth addressing. So on behalf of the Victoria Park neighbourhood and all its residents, I'm here to respectfully request that the city investigate other locations that can house the downtown work vehicles, ones that don't require transit through a residential neighbourhood. Councillor Etherington asked earlier where we thought we could put it. And I think it's pretty well-known that there are several industrial locations very close to downtown Kitchener that are not made very good use right now. I don't think there's any shortage of locations that could be found to house this. And no newly designed neighbourhood would be designed with a municipal workyard at the end of a residential cul-de-sac. And we only ask that our neighbourhood be granted that same respect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is one question, I think. Councillor Etherington.
Yeah, Anna, thank you very much for coming. I just have one question. I appreciate the fact that neither you, neither of us are expert on vehicles and trucks. But can you tell me what kind of vehicles you see going past your house?
I'm not at home during the day these days. I'm back at work now. But I definitely see a lot of water vehicles going by, those little orange garbage things, street sweepers. Honestly, my boys get really excited when trucks go by because they're four and one and a half. So it's a bit of a bittersweet thing, but I understand that it is a negative effect for a lot of people. But I couldn't name, my three-year-old would probably be better at naming the types of vehicles.
That was going to be my next question, actually, whether your son loved the vehicles.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Okay, we had two people wanting to ask questions of staff. So councillor Gazola, you were first. Press your button, please. Okay. Actually, are you wanting to add information or are you just ready to answer questions? Okay. Councillor, sorry, I got the wrong one up there. Councillor Gazola.
I wanted to ask staff. It appears, and I heard this from when someone had sent out a letter to the members of council, that this has become a satellite station for our vehicles. When did that happen?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Victoria Park units have been there for quite a while, quite a while being even before the Goodrich Drive facility was constructed. I am advised that there are currently 14 vehicles in that location. And 11 of those vehicles have been there for many years.
How many vehicles does it take to maintain Victoria Park? Surely it doesn't take 11 or 14?
There are, without getting into a lot of detail, probably one half of them, a little more than half, would appear to be for the Victoria Park purposes, which includes the sweepers and the pickup trucks and the dump truck and the mowers, crew cabs, sidewalks, plows. Others are there for the purpose of servicing adjacent neighbourhoods.
Sadly.
Yes.
I'm surprised that it... I go through there a lot of times and I bicycle, and I don't see that many vehicles working on Victoria Park. I'm somewhat surprised at the numbers.
Do you have a question, further question?
Yeah, the other, there was a question about, people are talking about noise vibration. So are there that big of vehicles that are there that are causing noise vibrations?
Most of the vehicles through, Mr. Mayor, are smaller vehicles. There is a large water truck, as you heard, that does come in to fill up at the back when it's in the area, when it's doing work in that general area. That water truck also fills up at other locations, depending on which part of the city it's in. That truck is stored full-time at the Kitchener Operations Facility.
Are there any other large vehicles there?
The only other large vehicle is a one-tonne dump truck, which is used for flower bed maintenance, tree cleanup, parking lot, shrub beds. The vehicles that may make some additional noise are three new, or three trackless mowers that have recently been added to that complement. So that's why the complement went from 11 to 14. Those trackless mowers do make as much noise as a truck driving by.
Councillor Etherington, you were next in line from your questions earlier on. And you said you wanted to bring something?
It's a question for staff, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead. You were on. You just put yourself off. Okay, go ahead.
Hans, my question is, are some of these vehicles used to pick up garbage for downtown?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
And how large would those vehicles be? Are they small trucks? Do you know? I sympathise with Hans. Mr. Mayor, this was, the residents have been in touch with both Greg Hummel and Jim Wempe, but I think Greg is away on vacation. So I suspect Hans got stuck with this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try my best to answer. The litter pickup vehicles are Polaris Ranger Trucksters. They're smaller truck vehicles.
Not the huge garbage truck?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll come back to you. There are two other people with questions, then I'll come back to you again. There are now three. Councillor Janetski, questions only.
Yeah, questions to staff. I'm quite surprised that this has happened because I knew there was a shed back there and there are some vehicles. I remember even going back there four years ago to...
Just questions.
On some issues. How long ago did all these increases in vehicles start?
To my knowledge and based on the information I have, 11 of the 14 vehicles have been there for five, six, seven years, at least. The three mowers, trackless mowers, were recent additions. And there was a recent, and when I say recent, it's probably within the last three years, there was a route planned for maintenance of adjacent areas, adjacent areas for park maintenance.
So there were a number of vehicles there for six, seven years ago. Has there been an increase this past year or since the Brom Street Yards have closed down?
No, the only addition were three trackless mowers, and that was very recent, as I understand it.
Well, what puzzles me is your answer versus the comments from the residents here that it appears all of a sudden there's this huge outbreak of vehicles going by where your telemeter has only just a handful just been added. I can't see the correlation in terms of what they're saying versus your response.
That is the dilemma, and I think that we need to investigate that a bit further.
All right. So the next question is, is the intent of staff there to also have snow plowing equipment over the winter?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. As far as winter operations are concerned, there are some sidewalk plows, the crew cabs, which are there anyway, a bobcat skid skier, a John Deere sweeper that sweeps trails and sidewalks around the park as well as the downtown, the ice rink is taken care of. So yes, there are maintenance, winter maintenance vehicles that are in that location. For some, it's a matter of switching blades, switching equipment.
So do I get the impression then that come this winter, there'll be more vehicles there? Or is it just a shift of the blade and some of those winter vehicles are kept at COFF?
I would, at this point, I would answer that it's probably a change of equipment use. The vehicles themselves would probably not change. But I would defer that to some additional information that I'm suggesting would be forthcoming.
Okay. Well, my last question then is that COFF was created back just the last few years to be the central location of all the city operations. And I also got the impression that with the closure of the Brom Street facility, being one of the main ones, that also Victoria Park would probably close down, whatever maintenance vehicles, because the COFF would be central for everything. But I see now it's become a satellite facility. Why weren't we told about that this Victoria Park was at least a satellite facility for vehicle storage and dispersion for staff to go do their jobs?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The COFF, the Kitchener Operations Facility, was developed in order to take vehicles and equipment and staff from Bram Street, from Elmsdale, from Chandler, from the Regional Transit Centre where we have mechanics, and from Battler.
Who was the last one?
Battler Yards.
Oh, Battler, yeah.
The smaller areas where we store equipment, such as Victoria Street, or sorry, Victoria Park, Woodside Park, Bud Park, and other areas, those were to remain as is. Those were just smaller areas where very little equipment was that was needed at that location or adjacent.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think there seems to be more questions than there really are answers. And I'm not saying there's anything against Mr. Hollins. Of course, it's more to do with the staff that would be appropriate answer are not available. But I'll still ask some questions. So you refer to some of the vehicles. You answered some of my questions I had. The vehicles that are there at the park right now, most of them are there for the purpose of facilitating the park and the joining areas, correct?
That's correct.
And this equipment isn't necessarily effective to be housed on a far-off distance where it could commute back and forth? These are smaller machines?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The reason they're there is essentially to provide an effective and efficient operation.
Right, okay. You refer to a water truck, and I'm guessing this is a larger vehicle. For the purpose of getting water, it goes to that facility. Do we have any... Do we have any, any mechanism? I know we've changed the, the Brom Yards quite a bit. It's for a different purpose now. Do we have any capacity to get water there or any other facility that's within the downtown core that's owned by us?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, at the present time, the water facility is still located at, at Elmsdale. We're looking at moving that to a better spot, whether it's going to be at Battler or whether it's going to be at the Kitchener Operations Centre. That's one thing that we're working on. There are other areas within Kitchener where the water truck can be filled up. It's a matter of finding that location adjacent to the area where you're working so that you're not driving too far, so that you're using your time efficiently.
Okay, thank you. And I'll vote on accordingly whatever Counselor Etherington has in mind, but it's of my opinion, I think we don't want to act too rash, as we do need to get some, some questions answered, and the appropriate staff has to be available to be able to conduct it. And at the same time, I think staff are, there's willingness to, to change the logistics, to be mindful of the concerns that the residents are, are raising. But I'll see what Counselor Etherington has in mind.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. What is the distance roughly from Victoria Park to the Cough?
Approximately fifteen kilometers.
Fifteen kilometers, okay.
I'm sorry, seven and a half, it's fifteen round trip.
Oh, okay, fifteen, all right. And somebody was informing me that, or somebody was saying that motorized vehicles are using the Iron Horse Trail as a diversion. Is that the case?
The, through you, Mr. Mayor, the trackless mowers at this point have been using the Iron Horse Trail to get to other locations outside of the park. That is correct.
Now, motorized vehicles are not allowed on the Iron Horse Trail. So are we, are we being exempt? Are we, I mean, that's not a really good signal to send to the other motorized vehicles who are, you know, are not allowed on there. Is there some message that we're sending to the citizens of Kitchener that we can use the trail with our motorized vehicles and they cannot? I, I'm a little bit concerned about that. We've got people who are, you know, parents with strollers who are using those areas, and I, I, I think that's a real safety concern.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I was just reminded that we do have maintenance vehicles on our trails on a regular basis.
But these are traveling. I mean, if they're working on the trail, that's a different matter than if they're traveling and going from point A to point B. If they're working on the trail, yes, we'll have motorized vehicles. I understand that I've been on the trail and that's happened. But if they're, if they're traveling from one location to another, their speed is going to be a little bit different than if they're working on the trail.
That's clearly one of the issues that needs to be discussed. I think Counselor Etherington's bringing that forward.
Okay. I guess there'll be comments afterwards. I'll preserve my comments till then.
Okay. Counselor Etherington, you wish to bring forward a motion?
Yeah, can I just make my comment first before the motion?
Sure.
So I live adjacent to the park. It's actually the other side of the park. So I share with residents what has already been said about residents who live beside the park, put up with a lot of noise and traffic from a variety of large festivals and events that nowadays take place almost every summer weekend. Residents understand and accept those festivals. Over the years, they've also tolerated the noise from city vehicles, obviously used to maintain the beautiful park. And I just wanted to say that while I'm certain they would, they would love to see some of those noisy activities reduced, the park is becoming exhausted. They accept that activity as a fact of life when you live in the Victoria Park area. However, I think they currently have a very legitimate concern about the increase in city vehicles housed at the park. I don't know the answer to, it does not seem to jive with the information we're getting. I don't know how many vehicles or how many of, what the, that percentage of increase has been. But presumably it's since Bram Street would close. So in an effort to get at this, I'd like people to get together with staff. I would move that we ask staff to prepare a report, possibly meet with residents, prepare a report, come back to committee, council committee, in an effort to find a satisfactory solution to this issue.
Yeah, that should come back to committee, I would suggest. Have you chosen a date?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have a schedule.
Take a look at our upcoming schedule. Committees are on September the ninth and the thirtieth. To staff, do you have any suggestion as to date?
I would suggest September thirtieth.
Okay. All right, so will you include that in your motion then? Can you read it once more, please?
Sure, then, so that motion would be that council asks staff to meet with residents and prepare a report, which would come back to Committee of Council on September the thirtieth, in an effort to find a solution to this issue.
All right, is there a seconded for that motion? Counselor Singh. All right, now, speaking to the motion, I have two so far. Counselor Gazola. Counselor Gazola.
I was surprised, I snuck right to the top here. I will support that motion. It's pretty straightforward. I did, I didn't make any comments when I was, when I was asking questions, but I do want to make a comment that what is happening here is what I suspected a few years ago was going to happen. When this whole issue was before us, I did not support the location of where, where are what is now called the Kitchener Operations Facility. It started out as a central maintenance facility, which makes sense to places it in the center of the community, and there was a spot that I thought met the requirements. And then it's been changed to the consolidated maintenance facility, and now it's the Kitchener Operations. But I was, I, I'm amazed tonight to hear that really it wasn't consolidated, that we've got, still got all of these vehicles. There's fourteen vehicles here, we've got vehicles at Bud, we've got vehicles all over the place. And I don't know, but I thought when we put that facility out there, that cost as much as this city hall, that everything was going to be located out there. So this comes as quite a surprise. And then to hear that lawn mowers and things are traveling up, up the, the trails, I mean, they're, it's one thing to be working on the trails, but to be using them as, as a shortcut. That's why we had all those, all those gates up there that we finally were able to get rid of. And I'm curious as to how the lawn mowers get around the railroad tracks with a double set of gates. Be interesting. I definitely think we need to revisit this whole situation and, and look at it, and there's been a lot of talk about it's more convenient, and yes, I expected that. But I thought all of this was taken into account when we were looking at the business case for the central maintenance facility, consolidated facility, whatever it is. Simply, I will support what's before us. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask, there are four members of council who want to speak to it. I'm going to ask you to speak just to the motion. If you wish to debate about what has happened in relationship to Cough, let's hold those comments until we get to the discussion that will be part of the report on September the thirtieth. Now, we're dealing just with this motion to ask for the report to come to us on September the thirtieth. Counselor Glenn Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I am very glad that the, the delegations came forward tonight, very well prepared. You should really be pleased with yourselves, you covered a lot of bases. And I appreciate the work you put into this, including the petition. I don't think that we would see you before us if there was a minor disruption of a few vehicles. I honestly believe that you've, you've experienced a major disruption, and not only in lifestyle, but the volume and the, the noise. And I believe that we really owe it to you to take a deep look at this and perhaps to get on the street and to see about how this is impacting you if we lived there. So I, I think that we, we do need to look at the opportunities to not only service the park with, with a small number of vehicles, but also to move those vehicles that, that don't need to be there off to another facility. So I fully support this motion.
Counselor Ivanovich.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I too will be supporting the recommendation. Think the residents brought forward some, some very legitimate concerns today. I also think that this can fairly easily be resolved. We have enough other parking resources, quite frankly, within the, the downtown area in the vicinity of Victoria Park, that for most, if not all, of the vehicles, I think we should be able to find alternate arrangements with relative ease.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you, Mayor Zare. I'm comfortable with, with the motion. Just a couple of things I'll be looking for when this comes back, because it really only specifically mentions discussing it with the residents. I would like an attempt by staff to see, to get some hard numbers on the number of vehicles that are actually going through, as well as if it's possible, some pre and post Cough traffic. I'd like to see if there's a, a big difference. I would like a bit more information, if there is a recommendation of changing anything, I would like to know the financial implications and the service level implications of any changes. And lastly, on the point of city vehicles using the trails, the frequency of that, I'm, to be frank, I'm not as concerned. I think the city has, should have some exceptions in terms of being able to use the trails if it's efficient. If it's a constant, is it a constant thing if they're going back and forth all the time? Obviously, that's a different issue altogether. If it's once or twice a day and it's, it's a vehicle for cutting grass, that sort of thing, I personally don't have a big concern with that. If the alternative is that we end up paying a lot more money to service a parcel of land, that's, that would take a long time to go around. So those are my thoughts and the things I'll be looking for when this comes back on the thirtieth. Thank you.
Okay, I think those are reasonable items, probably would have been included in the report in any event, so that's good. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. Just in addition to, it was mentioned by Mr. Gross that there were a number of other satellite areas, and if we're going to be talking about the fact that we're using satellite areas, maybe a rationale as to why we're using those satellites might actually be a good component to this report. Bud Park is less than two kilometers away from the Cough, so I'm not quite understanding that. So I think that might be very helpful for us to understand why we are using satellite locations, especially something that's that close to the Cough. I will be supporting this. I think it's very important that the residents understand what's going on.
Counselor Unetsky.
Yes, thank you. I too will be supporting this motion. I am looking forward to an analysis and an explanation as to why staff have done this and their, and the numbers as to what was there initially versus what was there six, seven years ago, how many more vehicles have come since Brom Street has closed down, et cetera, and maybe what future expansion may be as well. I'm, I'm really puzzled that it's come to this, because the residents have just come out, and it looks like to me this has just unfolded over the last few weeks, although it appears maybe it's been ongoing for a while. So I can't understand the, the whole difference between what the residents are saying and where staff is coming from. I'm just baffled by that.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. Those in favor? Yes, you can. Recorded votes have been called for. You still wish to have a... No, I'm asking you. I, I'm, I'm in the chair. Okay, those in favor? Opposed, that is unanimous. We have two items related on the agenda, so you understand, sorry, what we've just done? It will be a report going back on September the thirtieth, and that report will be available to the public on... Christine, help me out, Thursday of, about the, the date before, Wednesday, twenty-fifth of September. So we have two items related to traffic calming measures, so I'm going to put those together. That's item B of, under delegations. I'm going to move to item C, Michael Harris, related to Bill seventy-three. And we have two other delegations related to that matter. You're up. Welcome, Michael. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you, council, for having me tonight, to allow me to speak about an issue on open tendering and the legislative change that's needed to protect property taxpayers from higher infrastructure costs. I know there was a letter distributed just recently tonight at council, and I'll draw your attention to that and speak to it a bit later on. Over the summer, I've had an opportunity to travel across this province and meet with municipal leaders and contractors to discuss my private members' bill, Bill seventy-three, the Fair and Open Tendering Act. And everywhere I go, I find that everyone can agree that municipalities have a different purpose and mandate than construction companies. Unfortunately, the Labor Relations Act fails to make this distinction. As a result, the Labor Board has chosen to classify municipalities as construction employers, making cities like Kitchener subject to collective bargaining rules for the construction industry. The problem with this situation is, once a municipality is unionized under these rules, they become bound to a collective bargaining agreement that is negotiated at a provincial level by construction companies and unions for construction companies. So I want to be clear, these agreements do not include public sector employers like yourselves in collective bargaining. Instead, if the Labor Board approves an application for certification made by a municipal worker, the municipality automatically becomes a signatory to a pre-existing province-wide agreement that it had nothing to do with. Now here's where the most serious concern for municipality lies. These agreements include strict subcontracting out restrictions that force municipalities to contract out all work on large infrastructure projects to companies organized by a specific union. This unfair labor practice in effect creates labor monopolies that drive up costs for taxpayers and excludes thousands of qualified contractors from working on publicly funded projects. Just consider what happened in Hamilton. After the city was certified by the Carpenters Union in two thousand and five, costs soon went up. For example, the first wastewater project tendered after the city was certified came in eighty-three percent over budget, or twenty-four million dollars more than expected. And this situation is not unique to Hamilton. We know that far too many public sector employers have been wrongly classified as construction companies by the Labor Board over the years. To date, in fact, Hamilton, Kitchener, Sioux St. Marie, Toronto, and the Greater Essex School Board have all fallen victim to this legal loophole. And now the region of Waterloo may also become trapped in one of these labor monopolies, which is projected to be just as costly as Hamilton's. To correct this situation and to prevent it from happening in more municipalities, all we need is clarity in Ontario's labor laws. And that's what my bill, the Fair and Open Tendering Act, would offer. If passed, Bill seventy-three would add a very clear definition to the Labor Relations Act for public sector employers that would exempt municipalities and school boards from the province's collective bargaining rules for the construction industry. This change would ensure that municipalities would no longer be at risk of losing millions of dollars to fight unions in court or to fund a labor monopoly that forces them to restrict up to seventy percent of qualified contractors from building our bridges, water treatment facilities, and public buildings. Because Bill seventy-three would exempt municipalities and school boards from collective bargaining rules for the construction industry, I took great care to ensure that the bargaining relationship between workers and their employers would be preserved. My bill does this by transitioning the relationship from the construction sections of the act to the industrial sections of the act. Once that transition is complete, workers could then join the union of their choosing and directly negotiate a collective bargaining agreement with municipalities and school boards directly. With this added protection, I think it's quite clear that Bill seventy-three is not a union or a non-union issue. It is truly an issue of fairness. Fairness for municipalities, for contractors, for workers, and ultimately taxpayers. And a growing number of municipal leaders who support Bill seventy-three understand this reality. In fact, the Large Urban Mayors Caucus of Ontario and the Mayors and Regional Chairs of Ontario, as well as Hamilton, Stratford, and Orangeville, have all passed resolutions calling on the province to exempt municipalities from province-wide collective bargaining. And now AMO has even endorsed Bill seventy-three. So on September nineteenth, Bill seventy-three will be debated at Queen's Park. So on September 19th, Bill 73 will be debated at Queen's Park. I would like to encourage you to indicate your support to the government before then so we can ensure this important legislative proposal can be referred to committee.
You have half a minute.
Well, I'll wrap it up. I would, of course, be pleased to answer any of your questions before the motion that will be moved by Counsel Fernandez. And of course, I'd like to thank you for doing so as not only a concerned counselor but as well as my ward counselor. So thank you, Fernandez, for doing that. And I'll conclude there and open it up to questions, should you have any.
Great. Thank you very much. There are several questions. Counselor Singh.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Harris, for coming forward with, well, putting this recommendation. I think it's long due and much needed that clarity needs to be brought to the Labor Act. And you said you've done some legwork with speaking with municipalities across Ontario, speaking to this issue. I'm guessing they're quite unified with their support and encouragement to such changes as the restrictive act that puts pressure on the municipalities? If you can just talk on that.
Yeah, of course. I've had the opportunity to table the bill before we rose in the legislature in the spring, and I've had an opportunity to travel the province. In fact, more recently, I was in Niagara Falls. I spoke with folks in Hamilton. I was in London, recently in Ottawa, of course, speaking to delegations at AMO. And I just returned back from Sioux St. Marie just this past week as there are two also included, or they're also subject to, in fact, two labor monopolies that have restricted qualified contractors in their community from bidding public infrastructure. So across the province, definitely happy to have the support recently just of AMO as I received that letter, in fact, today, specifically endorsing the measures outlined in Bill 73. Of course, Marco, Lumpco, Hamilton, Stratford, Orangeville, and a bunch of other municipalities across the province will be looking at resolutions in the coming weeks and days.
I think getting the AMO support, that speaks volume to the bill.
Right.
Now, as part of the kind of the data collection or the work that you've done to come forward with this, with Bill 73, as a data, were you able to figure out what the cost, increased cost per dollar type, you know, I'm simplifying, maybe you can elaborate more.
Well...
Relation to this, the restrictive act?
Yeah, sure. There have been various studies over the course of the years, specifically in Hamilton, where city staff initially pegged the increase, once Hamilton was certified in 2005, I believe, at around 5%. The carpenters themselves have admitted that it was likely around a 2% increase. And after the city consulted or hired a consultant to study and report back on the increase in costs, they've, they went back to the city of Hamilton and disclosed that they could see an upwards of 40% increase in infrastructure costs. And I think it's important to note that there will be arguments or debates on the range that, of the increases in costs. But I think there's a good example here in our own community at the region of Waterloo. Since December 2009, to date, there's roughly been $140 million worth of wastewater treatment work that's been tendered out. There were 27 eligible contractors that bid that work in that time period. Now, if the region is subject to these restrictions, that same amount of bidders for that same amount of work would be whittled down to just two. So I think that you don't, you don't need to be an economist to know that when you reduce the competitive nature of the bidding from 27 to two, costs will go up. And any increase to taxpayers is, that isn't warranted, is one that we do not need to incur, especially at a time when we've got a significant infrastructure deficit, not only in our own local communities, but across the province that we need to stretch infrastructure dollars as far as we can.
Yeah, and anyway you slice it, it's a huge significant impact. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Counsel Rubenovich.
Thanks. Thank you very much for coming in tonight, Mr. Harris. One question for you. You made reference to transitioning people from being part of a construction union to, or being covered under the construction portion of, I guess, the legislation, to the industrial portion. Wondering if you can elaborate on that a little more and how that would work?
Sure. Well, I guess, you know, going back to province-wide bargaining that was implemented to deal with, you know, province-wide construction strikes at the time, there was rules brought in that were really only meant for private construction companies within the Labor Relations Act that, you know what, basically restrict subcontracting out if, if a private construction company is actually signatory to a specific union. So in the act, or in my bill, what I've done is I proposed to take, you know what, those employees who still want to be, if they're, if they want to be represented by, you know, the Carpenters Union or what have you, or even QP, I allow for that, for that. But they're not, the municipality is not bound by the province-wide bargaining rules that are meant for construction companies, and they wouldn't, you know, adhere to those restrictive subcontracting out clauses that are actually only intended for private construction companies. And we'd move those employees to the industrial sections of the act that would actually mean that those employees would bargain directly with their employer being the municipality, whereas the construction side, they are now bound by a province-wide bargaining and the municipality being the employer has no seat at that table.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel?
Labor laws, it's a bit complex, but we have ensured that those, those workers who simply choose, they can choose whatever union to be represented, but they wouldn't be bound by that province-wide bargaining that restricts folks into those subcontracting out clauses.
Counsel Jurnetsky.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate the hard work that you've been doing to go across various parts of Ontario through different municipalities to get their endorsement, which you have. However, I do note that what you have before us is a private members' bill. And I know just based by general knowledge, a lot of private members' bill usually don't make it through, through the process and usually get defeated or just die on a table or whatever the terminology is. Do you think you have the support of all members of the legislature to get this passed? And what do you think your chances are of this?
Well, I hope that all members of this legislature that I am a part of at Queen's Park will see that this is a change that is long overdue, that it, you know what, after municipalities across the province have a call for this legislative change, will stand up for fairness for communities that, you know, have a significant infrastructure deficit, who want to do infrastructure projects in a fair and open way, and not only for the contractors who live in their communities, but the, you know, the taxpayers who also foot the bill. You know what, I have hoped that come second reading on September 19th, that it is actually referred to committee. I know that there's this longstanding tradition of not a lot of private members' business that does become law. However, I am hopeful that because of the nature of the legislature being that it is a minority, that actually, you know, private members' bills have proceeded just recently. I think that simple and sensible changes, and I'll give you an example, just last year, my colleague Bob Bailey from Sarnia worked on the Call Before You Dig Act, and that was, that became law. It was put forward by a private member bill on the opposition benches, and it became law. So I'm optimistic, and I think, you know, together touring the province, asking for municipalities, for construction associations, for taxpayers' support on this bill, it will send the signal to my colleagues that this is not of one of partisan nature, that it's one that we need to proceed to fix and ensure that we, you know, we stand up for taxpayers, for local contractors, to ensure that they have a fair and open opportunity to bid on public infrastructure. And so tonight will be another, you know what, meeting that I'll have attended, and I, and I hope that your signal will encourage my colleagues to do the right thing and get this into committee, and hopefully it'll go from there.
I noticed that last week, when we were in AMO, Association of Municipalities of Ontario for their conference, you were there networking with a number of representatives from the, from legislators. So I am prepared to support your, your bill here through our motion that will be coming forward, and we should best of luck.
Thank you, Zig. Appreciate that.
Counsel Aynaid.
Hi, Michael. Thanks for coming in.
My pleasure.
My question is, this topic has relatively been in the news recently, and you've been championing this, this, your bill here. I'm just wondering, did you had a chance to talk with staff on how this would affect the city of Kitchener?
Well, I, I've not spoke directly to staff here at the city. However, we have had, you know, some significant consultation with a variety of stakeholders, including, you know, municipal folks across the province on how these restrictions or closed tendering in communities like Kitchener have impacted them. You know what, Kitchener is one of the few municipalities across the province that are subject to a labor monopoly here, a masonry monopoly, I would say. When you go to contract out work, only a select few that hold a certain union card can actually perform work on, on city projects, you know, leaving a long list of local contractors. In fact, I, I've got a few in front of me tonight, you know, Advanced Masonry, Blairside, Costa Verde, Empire Restoration, Flagstone Construction, GMB Masonry. A lot of these folks, in fact, all of them are not allowed to bid on city of Kitchener masonry work, simply because they either are not affiliated with the right union or don't hold a union card at all. And, you know what, if they meet your procurement policies of the city, they should be allowed to bid. Unfortunately, these restrictive clauses prevent those folks who, you know what, work, who own these companies, who end pay tax here in the community from, from performing the work on these projects. And so, you know what, through those consultations, and in fact, I'm proud to have an endorsement from an actual union who have 1,200 some workers here in the community that would be shut out of regional work should those restrictions apply to the region. And so I think through that consultation process, whether it be from contractors, workers, municipal folks across the province, I think we've got the right legislative change that would add clarity to the act and open up competition.
Okay. I like where you're going with this, but I think, I think you should have discussed with staff personally to see whether or not, what is applicable, because to me, in principle, it sounds okay, but I don't, I'm really not too sure how much this is going to affect our municipality.
Well, you know what, I'll, just to answer that, you know what, Hamilton, in fact, in 2005, when they were certified by the Carpenters Union, I know they reached out to a lot of other, you know, municipalities to get them to get on board, to champion their call to get this legislative fix. Unfortunately, those, some municipalities, including, you know, ones that are local, opted not to get involved because, you know, they felt there would have been a target on their back. Well, you know, as I've said, across the province, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of who and when will be the next target. You know what, although it impacts the city of Kitchener and the direct impact to you would be the masonry contract, you know, there, there could be, you know, what, other arrangements come up at any time. And so, you know what, because the problem exists at the provincial level with regards to the Ontario Labor Relations Act, you know, we consulted heavily with our lawyers, obviously at Queen's Park, and other stakeholders that were directly impacted by, you know what, these, I guess, this labor loophole within the act. And so as, as a lawmaker, I've made an amendment to the Labor Relations Act to change the law. But fundamentally, the problem exists at the provincial level, and although there was wide consultation from municipalities, and I'm again proud of the endorsement from Marco, Lumpco, and more recently, AMO, I think that you can be rest assured that there was a significant amount of municipal, you know, voice to crafting this bill, but really the change needs to come at the provincial level, and that's what I'm proposing.
Okay. Good luck.
Counsel Ethington.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Harris. Have you had any opposition from labor groups on this? Mr. Harris?
Well, you know what, I've had an opportunity to widely consult. In fact, I was in St. Catherine's, Niagara, a few weeks ago, and I held a roundtable at the Local Construction Association. I believe every building trade union leader in the province was there. We had a very thorough discussion and debate on the merits of the bill. Unfortunately, sometimes the conversation or opposition, you know, encompasses other issues that have nothing to do with the actual legislative change that I'm proposing. As I had mentioned before, I'm proud to have the support of a trade union, the CLAC, who helped in the crafting of this legislation. And so, as I said before, this is not a union or a non-union issue, because in fact, members of, union people or union workers who hold union cards, in this case, are in fact discriminated against from working on some of these local projects. And there are those that simply choose to not be part of a union at all, who also do not benefit from this. And so, again, I'm proud to have support of a trade union for this bill to simply ensure that, you know, if you're a qualified contractor that meets the procurement policies of the city, you should be, you should be eligible to bid and ultimately work on that project if you're the best quality or highest quality at the best price for taxpayers.
And you are here at Kitchener Council asking for our support. Have you talked to the local labor council about being here or invited them?
Well, I... Sorry?
I presume they're not here.
Well, I asked to be a delegation as, as an MPP, informing counsel to a motion that I know will be brought forward by Counselor Fernandez. That was my intent tonight, to inform folks of this important legislative change that impacts municipalities across the province, but more importantly, how it affects Kitchener and what Kitchener Council can do by sending a message to my colleagues of the Ontario Legislature that we agree with the call for the change and we ask that you support the bill.
Thank you. Thanks very much for coming.
My pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be asking, I'll be opposing this, but I would ask that it be deferred until we hear from the local labor council.
I will take motions later. I have one more speaker. Counsel Fernandez.
I just wanted to thank Michael for coming in and, and giving some background to Counsel on this issue. The work that you have done really fits in very well with a concern that I rose, brought to Counsel almost two years ago about the mason contract that you spoke about. I think that you have done a tremendous amount of work, and I think that it looks so much like we are getting so much support across the province from a very wide variety of people. And I will be speaking to my motion when it's appropriate time.
Are there any further questions of the delegation?
Can I just respond to Yvonne?
He can respond. Can you not?
Very briefly.
Yeah, thank you.
I think you've summarized a whole lot of things, Michael.
Yeah, thank you, Yvonne. I really appreciate you bringing forward this important, you know what, motion on behalf of taxpayers, but more importantly, those local contractors that are employees and workers who work here, pay tax, and want to see simply an opportunity to bid on public infrastructure projects. I will say that, you know, this bill has been widely consulted across the province, and I think the letter in front of you today from AMO sends a strong signal that, you know what, they, they've looked at this issue, consulted with all kinds of groups, including labor, and that this, you know, important motion proceed tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are two other delegations. Joe Plunkett. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Thank you. My name is Joe Plunkett. I'm the representative of the local bricklayers, local 12 here in Kitchener. We do have, as was stated by Michael, a collective agreement that's been in place since the early 1980s. It was my predecessor who's known to some of you, people, Brian Strickland, who's, was in my position at that time. So no, I didn't know anything about Michael's presentation until Friday. So to say that, that the, the local taxpayers, I mean, my membership, we have 300 members here locally. The locals been, was chartered by the International Union of Bricklayers 1900, 113 years ago. We've been in Kitchener. We've been there since. We hope to be here for another, at least 113 years. But, you know, we are part of this community also. We, we've done an awful lot of work. Just give me a moment here. We are, we are this community. We pay the property taxes, our guys at... Hello? One moment, please. We are members of the local building trades, the, many years ago, 20 years ago, myself as a younger man raising a family here in Kitchener. I've been here for 28 years. I found myself unemployed. Just to give you an idea, I'm part of the community spirit of the local and of the local building trades is which we are part. We found myself unemployed in the wintertime, and there was a program put together, to be honest, through a college, the city here, and the local unions, the building trade unions, to build the... The workers, the members of the union did the work voluntarily, the employers, they submitted the materials free of charge, the equipment. I'm just trying to give you how much of the community that we have been part of for so long. Even today, the building trades, we are part of the charitable places around town here. We contribute to the Santa Claus parade here in town, the Out of the Coal Program, the Food Bank Program. And today, the building trades, the local building trades, they're holding their JDRF annual, which raises somewhere in the region to $20,000, so for the local community. Most recently, we had an issue with the staff, I'm glad somebody mentioned, I had an issue and I brought to council staff about somehow, I used to have a good working relationship with Laurie Prue, who retired maybe two years ago, maybe three. Anyway, through that, transitions happened, and the library down here went outside of our contract. I had a meeting with the staff, Mr. Chapman, Cynthia over here, Larry. You know, we put it down to that. There was a communication thing. It wasn't a we're after you, or we resolved it amicably. But the problem for me, while that goes on, is I have got members who are, you know, they're city taxpayers who are standing watching, people coming from out of town, doing a job, either, I believe that it's a non-union company that's doing that work, maybe cheaper, but I mean, it's an immediate problem for me, and I have to find other work for these guys. I mean, they can't find work in their own community, and then, you know, it becomes difficult. You know, at the end of the year, you know, when the council here comes to the guys, if they're not going to hire them to do the work, where are they going to get them to pay their taxes for the following year? I mean, as I say, I really, that's all I have to say at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Joe? Yes, there are a couple. Counselor Gazola?
I just wanted, did I hear you say that you knew nothing about this?
I wasn't aware of the bill until this meeting, until Friday, and I wasn't aware of the bill, no.
No, but were you aware of what he's been trying to do?
No.
This is the first you've heard of it?
The first I heard was Friday.
Because there's been considerable media coverage locally. I'm surprised you hadn't heard anything.
I was made aware of this meet. That's why I came down.
Thank you.
Counselor Yudniewski?
Yes, thank you. Just a simple question.
Yeah.
Do you believe in the free democratic process of having all companies bid for a job, or is it just be totally restricted to unions?
Restrictions, the best people for the job, people that do the best job, I mean, you only need to look around, you see the work we do, but we built this place.
So, basically, you're saying it should be free and open to anybody?
Obviously.
For bidding, for a job?
Well, we work by collective agreement, so I would hardly endorse that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. There are no further questions. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
William Myers?
My name's Bill Myers, and I work for the Carpenters' Union. I'm not a member of the union. I'm a dispatcher for the Carpenters' Union. And I just, I, there has been a lot of press coverage, and I feel it's been one-sided and anti-labour, and that it is quite, it is a partisan argument against labour unions. Just a couple of comments, observations I'd like to make, that you realize that the majority of the large projects around the city are actually done by large companies. There aren't very many large local construction companies. And so, you get many Toronto companies that are working on these projects because they are large projects, and whether the union or non-union, they're coming from out of town. And one thing that is part of the provincial collective agreement that the Carpenters have is that there has to be roughly 50% mix of local labour versus out-of-town labour. And you certainly won't find that with a lot of the non-union companies. You'll find that they bring every, almost every worker that they have working on these projects from whatever municipality they're from. And so, I agree with what Mr. Plunkett said, that in the case of the Carpenters' Union, there's 600-plus members locally, and that they are taxpayers and they are members of the community as well. So, I just wanted to caution against the, you know, it may be a bit more complicated than it first appears, but although I appreciate what Mr. Harris is trying to accomplish, unfortunately, I feel it's anti-labour and it's certainly anti-local labour. And that's really all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, there is at least one. Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Myers, for coming in and presenting your opinion from the Carpenters' Union. I just, a quick question to you, would you support that 70% of our general public who may be working in the construction industry are not eligible to bid or work on a project because they're not in a union?
I don't know exactly what this statistic would be, but you would have to realize that if this, if the Carpenters' Union was successful, and let me reiterate, I don't speak for the Carpenters' Union. I'm here as a private citizen commenting on this, but I would just like to say that if the Carpenters' Union was successful, naturally, they, the Carpenters' Union would have a lot more work in this area, and they would be able to add members. So, there would be more, whereas now there's 600 members of the Carpenters' Union locally, you may have more members eventually. So, it certainly is not going to exclude qualified people from work.
And members would be paying union dues, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, they would, yes.
So, then, to increase the membership would be to increase the dues that would be received by the union?
Well, yes, ultimately, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. There are no further questions?
Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Fernandez, do you wish to bring in your notice of motion? This is item 8A on our agenda.
Yes. Yes, I would. Thank you very much. So, my motion reads as such, whereas municipalities are not commercial enterprises and have a different purpose and mandate from business in construction industry, and whereas the Ontario Labour Relations Board treats municipalities as businesses and employers for the purpose of the construction industry provisions contained within the Labour Relations Act 1995, and whereas an amended amendment to the Labour Relations Act 1995 is needed to clarify that municipalities are not employers in the construction industry, and whereas the Large Urban Mayors' Caucus of Ontario has previously requested such an amendment to the Labour Relations Act to protect fair and open tendering for municipal infrastructure projects, and whereas such an amendment would ensure the best value for infrastructure projects funded by all three levels of government, and whereas such an amendment would ensure fairness for all workers regardless of their affiliation with a particular union by guaranteeing the right to work on a publicly funded infrastructure project, and whereas such an amendment would save taxpayers money by ensuring the most qualified contractor offering the best value is awarded contracts for publicly funded infrastructure projects tendered by Ontario municipalities. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Kitchener support Bill 73, the Fair and Open Tendering Act, and request the Legislative Assembly of Ontario to amend the Labour Relations Act 1995 to clarify that municipalities are not construction employers. This is an important bill. I think it will open an opportunity for a democratic process that our taxpayers would expect of us. I think it's important that we are accountable to our taxpayers, all of our taxpayers, who are expecting that any projects that are tendered by the city would have, every company would have a fair and equitable opportunity to bid on that tender. I see a number of people nodding their heads, and I think that's really important, that they understand how important it is that we have the opportunity to, 70% of our companies, our contractors, Mr. Harris even listed some of them, who have not been able to tender on projects at the city. And to have them not have that opportunity, I think, is unfair and equitable. So, I look forward to support from my fellow colleagues. I realize it is a private members' bill, but I think we've heard that the Large Urban Mayors' Caucus and that the Ontario Municipalities of Ontario just last week have all supported this bill, and I think we need to do the same. I would ask for a recorded vote on this.
Okay. There are, there's a lineup of speakers. Could I suggest, I hope friendly amendment? This would be on, it's the fourth paragraph. We referenced the Large Urban Mayors' Caucus, and in light of the letter as well here, and AMO, and changed the word "has" to "have", so it's Lumpco and AMO have previously, et cetera.
Sorry, I turned off my mic, but yes, that would be...
That's one of them. And the other one, it may not be as friendly, but you can determine, I know what you're trying to get at, and this is the second, last, what's the final, whereas. But I don't want, I'm trying to help you here, I don't want it to get convoluted with something that's sort of distracted from this. I think that you've got a couple of different things in there that are not necessarily equating, where you say, saving taxpayers money by ensuring the most qualified contractors offering the best value, and each of those things are not mutually exclusive. So, I, my preference would be, to be quite frank with you, is if you delete that whereas, I know that, or change it to some extent, because you've got too many things in there, and they're, they can be contradictory.
Okay. Let me just take a look at, see if I can make some changes or...
Let you work with that, and that's why I suggested that now.
Okay. Thank you.
Because as it is now, I can't support that whereas, but I will be supporting the resolution, but that whereas throws a different mix into it.
Okay. Let me take it, see if I can do something here.
Okay. Counselor Yudniewski?
Yes, thank you very much. I will be supporting this bill. I think it's extremely important that we move forward on it. It basically comes down to a couple of basic issues. Number one, what we have right now in terms of the legislation that we have to follow is discrimination against non-union companies that fail to have an opportunity to bid on these projects, and it's unfair and it's inequitable, and it doesn't serve any justice to them. Secondly, it's my opinion, based on statistics that I've seen and presented, that this is the best way to go, because in the end, it's not the city that benefits, it's the taxpayer. Because the money that we pay comes from the taxpayers, and if we can reduce the cost one way or the other through the tendering process and find the best qualified deal and best qualified price to do any type of job, it'll be the benefit in the end to the taxpayer. So, I'm prepared to support this. And I'm prepared to support it as worded, that is presented here right now, notwithstanding the comments of the mayor in terms of wanting to have some revisions to it, I'm pleased with it the way it is.
Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, the eventual vote of this council on this issue is entirely predictable, but surely we can show a little courtesy and, in my opinion, transparency by giving the labour council and any other local labour groups an opportunity to speak on this issue before we vote on it, and particularly to counter some of the anti-union sentiments that I'm hearing. And I'm not a great union guy, but I just like that kind of balance. For that reason, I would ask that this motion be deferred until the September 16th council meeting, to allow those local representatives from labour groups and the labour council to appear before us and present their arguments on this issue. And as I said, I don't think it'll change the vote, but I think we can afford to do that.
Okay. Just reminded of the procedural thing. I'm usually pretty good at this, but I failed to get the seconder for the motion. Counselor Glenn Graham? Okay. Now, you can, I'll leave it up to you, because it's your choice. You can either move that now, which cuts off comments by six others who are in line, or I can come back to you for the deferral after the end of comments.
Sure, the latter.
Okay. So, Counselor Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, try to be as candid as possible with this. You know, speaking to the motion that Counselor Fernandez has put forward, and to the work that Mr. Harris has done, I think it doesn't speak to being not fair or anti-union in any aspect. It's simply just asking for a playing, a fair playing field for our depressed taxpayers. The taxpayers are feeling the pension pressure of an outdated legislature. The Labour Relations Act 1995 is not reflective of the actual realities. Ontario municipalities like City of Kitchener have to operate under confines that are restrictive. Our municipality's general purpose of operation is not for generating profit, but provide to provide essential and necessary services to our citizens. To be treated as just, any other commercial enterprise and business is wrong and unjust for our municipal taxpayers who ultimately have to pay. Municipal property taxes, in my opinion, I think are the most unequitable form of taxation. The limits of the Labour Relations Act increases costs for our municipalities to meet its mandate and responsibilities towards its residents, only compounding the problem. Amendments to the act is much overdue, and I welcomely support Counselor Fernandez's motion, and support any bill that would amend and correct the current act.
Counselor Davy?
Thank you, Mayor Zare. I'm happy to see this before us. We haven't had a whole lot of MPPs coming before us. In a minority government, I think the situation is that, I think some people need the support of the municipalities, so I'm happy to see this before us. There's been some discussion about the exact amount that municipalities are paying extra because of the flaw in the legislation, and while they may argue about the exact amount, the reality is everyone's agreeing that we are paying or stand to pay a lot more. Taxpayers not long ago have told us that they expect us to maintain service levels with tax increases no greater than that of inflation, and when essentially the cards are stacked against us like this, we don't really have much of a chance of achieving that. So, the province has a lot of problems before them. This is one that doesn't affect provincial revenue, it doesn't affect, essentially, if they can fix this problem of municipalities with a stroke of a pen. So, I sincerely hope that at the provincial level, they can set partisanship aside and fix this issue. I will gladly support the motion as brought forward by Counselor Fernandez. I would prefer the whereas be stricken as per Mayor Zare, but I will support it either way.
Counselor Glenn Graham?
Thank you, Mayor Zare, and I will also be fully supportive of this motion regardless of its amendment. In our primary interest as councillors is to represent the best value for the citizens of our city, and I believe that this does that. You know, we all want a fair living wage for every worker. We want our workers to be able to bid on projects out of town as well. I would be very concerned if we had a limited number of potential bidders... I would be very concerned if we had a limited number of potential bidders on a project. Mr. Harris has indicated that that might be reduced from something like twenty-seven to two. That's unacceptable to me. Of course, we want good quality of work here, and we want a fair living wage. I don't believe that we're giving up anything here. We're gaining a level playing field, we're gaining clear opportunities for more workers to bid on projects, and that represents the best value for our community. With regard to the Labor Council, we're not making a decision here tonight, so I believe that they should show up at Queen's Park and make their delegation known to them. Thank you.
Counselor Gazola.
Yes, I will be supporting this bill that Mr. Harris is bringing forward. I've spoken to him about it. It is really, it is really a question of leveling the playing field. I commend him for the hard work that he has done in canvassing for his position with this bill, and, and it appears that it is receiving considerable, has already received considerable support across this province. It is, you know, the tendering system is the fairest system for municipality to work with. We often see tenders that come forward, and it's, we often see, and we'll see it even tonight, where there are suppliers who are not from our, within our own community, that are coming in with the sharpest pencil and the best deal for, for, for us, and ultimately our taxpayers. And it hurts sometimes to have to go in that direction when we have so many businesses in our own community that can provide these services. But on the other hand, as, as been mentioned, our local companies also bid elsewhere. It's, we're, we're in a, in a global market with most things nowadays, and so we, we also have our, our companies bidding all over our province, all over the country, and many different places in the world. And so this is, this, to me, I don't see this as, as harming our trade unions, our unions are important, there's no question about that. I don't see this as harming, it's just a matter of, of leveling the playing field for everyone. And it's, and, and the, at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's the best workers at the best price for ourselves. We do that, we do that when we're buying for our own home. We, we want the best price we can get, and we want the same thing for our municipality. So I will be supporting that. I, I'm curious on the deferral. I don't know what, how that impacts Mr. Harris's pathway, and if, if, I would like to hear about that, if there is a call for a deferral.
Counselor Einaitis.
I was gonna support the deferral, but seeing all the comments around the horseshoe, I do support, I do support the principle of what Mr. Harris and Yvonne's...
Can you pull your microphone?
Yvonne's motion. I just would have preferred to have heard maybe the other side and see what their comments are. And in addition, I think I would have preferred to see what the impacts are on Kitchener in itself, because this is ultimately, we're here to represent Kitchener, and before we pass anything, I, I would, I would have preferred to know a little more information and get a better understanding of how it's gonna affect our community.
Counselor Verbanic.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just before I make my comments, can I ask where we're at, or what the result is on the motion?
Counselor, the amendment you talked about.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I've just made a few modifications with regards to the whereas. I changed the word "would" to "could," and by ensuring that all qualified contractors offering contracts for publicly funded infrastructure projects tendered by Ontario municipalities. So I removed "the best value is awarded" and "the most..."
Can you just read it then in its entirety?
Yep. Whereas such an amendment could save taxpayers by ensuring that all qualified contractors offering contracts for publicly funded infrastructure projects tendered by Ontario municipalities.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Badik, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting the motion that's before us. I, I think it is an issue that's important to, to all of the taxpayers in our community, and I think it's also one that's important to all of the various bargaining units that exist within the community. I was pleased to hear that, in fact, one union has already come on board with this and with the changes. I too would have preferred that, that clause is taken out, but I think the changes, at least address most of my concerns with the clause, the whereas clause as it exists right now.
Okay, I'll let you close off, Counselor Fernandez. I'll just make a couple of comments first, if I can, and go back to you. As I indicated earlier, I can support, and thank you for making the change to that whereas clause. It takes out the ambiguity, or the juxtaposition actually, that was embedded in there. And I, I just wanted to say that I think this is, this is about the open tendering, and as it relates to municipalities, it, in my mind, it is nothing more and nothing less. I understand what Counselor Einaitis is saying, and in a perfect world, it would be good to have a little bit more time to understand what some of the potential implications will be for, for the City of Kitchener in itself. I think we can speculate what those will be, and it probably, in the end, would not necessarily change our, our position on what we would be dealing with here. So I am prepared to, to deal with that matter tonight. So Counselor Fernandez, back to you, final comment.
Deferral.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I said I would come back to you. Do you want to press your microphone, please?
Okay.
Counselor Etherington, you had, I'm sorry for missing that, you wanted to bring forward a motion to defer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Until?
Until September sixteenth council meeting.
Okay.
And that's to allow local labor representatives and the Labor Council to speak on this issue.
Okay, is there a second for that deferral?
I don't support the deferral, but for the interest of bringing it to the table to allow discussion, I can second it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, there is no discussion on a deferral. The deferral motion is there.
To give Counselor Etherington an opportunity to bring...
The, the, a motion for deferral is only debatable as to time, so we can't talk about the pros and cons. It is now on the table, and it has been seconded. And I'm going to call the vote on the deferral. Those in favor of the deferral motion. Those opposed, that motion is defeated. We're back to the main motion now, Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. I appreciate the extra time to make an extra comment. I did a little bit of wordsmithing, and I appreciate that, you know, I was able to take a few, few of the statements out. I hope the clerk was able to get it, otherwise I have it written here. I think this is a very positive step in the right direction to a democratic and open and fair and tendering process. It will benefit everyone. It is not partisan, it is not against unions, it's against open and fair and equitable tendering. I look forward to the recorded vote and to, sorry, Michael Harris's bill coming forward in the legislature.
Okay, recorded vote has been called for. You can now vote. Okay, that motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. We now go back to the delegations, and this is item number four B. Tom Glazer, Grazer, I'm sorry, Grasser, put my glasses on, that would help, Tom Grasser, related to Highview Drive, and this is clause eight of the CIS committee report. And there are several clauses to that. Mr. Grasser, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Zaire and councilors. My name is Tom Grasser. I'm just gonna give you a little history of myself. I've been a professional engineer in the province of Ontario for thirty-two years. As such, as a professional engineer, I'm obligated under the Engineers Act to, to have a serious concern about public safety, and that is one of my issues, why I'm talking. Last twenty-two years, I've been involved with fire life safety issues, either responding with the, with the fire service and/or the ambulatory, typically within Toronto. I reside in eighty-seven Hickory Hollow. Eighty-seven Hickory Hollow is a, is a crescent, and we're bounded by Highview. So the decision that was made for Highview directly affects me. There is nothing I can do about it, except express my concerns today. I picked up the house nineteen eighty-eight. We picked the location because Hickory Hollow is a crescent, and we recognize that Highview is a main thoroughfare. As such, it'll be busy, that's the reality. And as such, we didn't pick Highview, we picked Hickory Hollow. So my concerns are kind of three concerns. One, from an EMS perspective, the implementation of, of speed bumps will degrade response time, that's a reality. Not only that, it'll also degrade the impact time of travel to, to St. Mary's Hospital or, or any of the adjoining hospitals. That time, nobody can really say from a risk point of view. It could be moderate, it could be severe, but there'll be a risk. The second service is the fire service. Their response time will be degraded by speed bumps. It's a reality, and that degradation could be moderate to severe. So what we have here is we have two, what I think, community safety considerations that are gonna be impacted in a significant negative way, just by the simple speed. The third issue is quite simple, the physical impact. There's no speed bump that's a comfortable speed bump. The best speed bump is no speed bump. So from a physical point of view, I'm getting old, I hate to admit it. My back is starting to hurt, my wife has a back problem. Those will degrade our quality of life and the surrounding neighborhood. So I understand that there was committee meetings, and I understand there was a vote, and I understand that we've accepted, you've accepted, speed bumps on, on Highview. I'm just bringing in the impact that I'm presenting issues that the citizens won't think about. They won't think about the fire, they won't think about the ambulance, they won't think about the heart attack. I'm presenting that because part of my life is risk assessment. I have to take a look at risk assessment, I have to take a look at emergency planning, right? Not, I'm great one-on-one, but not great in front of all you people. But those are, those are decisions that realistically I'm asking you to make for the citizens, because they're not gonna be asking those questions, right? And I believe wholeheartedly that, that putting an impediment and a speed bump is an impediment on that road, especially Highview, for that municipality, that region, is, is a degradation, degradation of their life safety, of, you know, emergency response, fire response, and it'll, it'll eventually be a life balance issue for them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, yes, sorry, there is. Counselor Einaitis.
Thanks, Tom, for coming in and...
Good evening, Bill.
You do make some valid points, but my, my, my concern is, what do you say to the residents that, who, who, let's say eighty, I think it's eighty-eight percent, I don't have a report, but on Highview, who want speed bumps? What do you say to those residents?
Well, I, I could probably help you with a great formulation for that, but the issue is, you have twenty, twenty percent of people in Highview that oppose it, and it's not just Highview. Unfortunately, Highview impacts Hickory Hollow and the surrounding area. So it's hard for them to, to rationalize their impact on the other people. So they want speed control. Fine. I think you're, you're looking at also narrowing the, the laneway. That's speed control. But an impediment like a speed bump, to me, is not an issue. You're, you're affecting emergency response. So, so if you ask them, and, and you'd be asking them very unfair questions, do they recognize that they will be impacted from a life safety point of view? Do they recognize if there's an erring fire, that those ten, thirty seconds that are gonna be impacted could, could be their house? I don't think they're thinking that through. Those are big questions, those are the hard questions to ask them. You're kind of answering the question with a question, but those are things that they're not giving due consideration. So you're gonna give them due consideration, you're taking a look at their community safety, you're not just taking a look at Highview. Will you be a popular person in that regard? Possibly, if people actually soul-search and take a look at what you're actually saying. I would appreciate that.
Makes some good points, thank you.
Okay, there are no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, are you bringing forward the report? So Counselor Einaitis, do you want to press your microphone, please? I don't know that you have to read the entire thing, just the, the essence of it. Bring forward the motion from the Community and Infrastructure Services Committee. Do you have the, the major sheet in front of you?
Maybe I do have it in here.
Just the essence of the, the motion. Perhaps read down to...
Here we go. It's item number...
Item number eight.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Do you want me to just read like a...
I, I think there's, since there are a number of people in the audience, and, and in terms of what we are trying to do with people who may end up watching this and getting into that custom...
Okay, so I'll just read...
So read most of it, but I don't think you need to read all of it.
Okay. Item number eight, that two speed humps be installed on Highview Drive between Driftwood Drive and Iron Needles Boulevard, and that two speed humps be installed on Yellow Birch Drive between Driftwood Drive and Iron Needles Boulevard, and that one raised crosswalk be installed on Highview Drive at the Hydro Corridor between Bent Willow Drive and Sugar Maple Street, and that one raised crosswalk be installed on Yellow Birch Drive at the Hydro Corridor between Hoddle Crescent and Cedar Crest Street, and that one intersection narrowing be installed on Highview Drive at Hickory Hollow Crescent, and that an always-stop control be installed at the intersection of Highview Drive and Driftwood Drive. And the rest are pretty...
There are various other parking restrictions that go along with that. Okay, it's been moved by yourself and seconded by?
Seconded by Counselor Badik.
Okay. Counselor Gazola.
I'm going to start off by saying that I will, I will be supporting the motion that's before us. It's, it's a tough one to deal with, and there's, it's really difficult to please everyone. And a lot of people will be pleased, there'll be other people that will be displeased. I think that going in this direction, we, we've been working with speed bumps for, for a number of years, and like I mentioned in the committee meeting, you know, I, I don't like them because they do slow you down, they make you drive more carefully, slow you down, and that's what they were intended to do. We have so many requests from across the city, they're num, I, I'm not, hundreds of requests of areas that want speed bumps because we all drive too fast. I think the point that the previous delegate made, that, that people aren't aware of the, of the safety issues, I, I don't think that is true, because our fire, our fire chief is here every time one of these comes up, reminding us of, of, of the consequences from his point of view. We're hearing from, from transit people as to the consequences from, from their point of view. And I, I can appreciate those, but I, I think we can work with it. When it comes to, with our firefighters and our, and our ambulances and all that, I, I think if they have to go faster, maybe it's gonna be a bigger cost to us for equipment. I think the, 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 the safety, the, the, the... I think the safety, the benefits that we've seen from traffic, from speed bumps, I think it's out there. We've seen the improvements, and we have seen that they do work, so I will be supporting this recommendation.
Okay. There, okay, yes, there are. Councillor Len Graham.
May I ask a question of staff?
Yes, you may.
Chief Beckett, is it true that the fire trucks need to slow down almost entirely when they come to a speed bump and then to re-accelerate, and that that adds time to the trip?
Sure you, Mr. Chair. Each speed bump would require us to slow down to probably around a 10 to 15 kilometer an hour in order to reverse the speed, the speed hump effectively and safely. Through calculations that have been done across the province, it's approximately about 10 seconds per speed bump that it adds to response times. And when we're talking about fire, fire doubles exponentially each minute in size. You know, my recommendation on speed bumps, as you know, is not to put them in, but that's not my choice, council gets to set the level of service.
Thank you for anticipating my next question about the number of seconds per bump.
Councillor Vanadis.
Thanks, Mayor Zaire. I'm going to ask a question of staff, and it really applies to both of them. In looking at this whole speed bump issue, both for the one we're going to be dealing with and this, one of the things that has come to my attention is that in the city of Waterloo, they have approached things, they've come up with a new approach to dealing with the fire truck issue. In fact, on Willowood Drive, as I understand it, the fire department worked with Waterloo traffic to come up with a solution where basically, instead of one large hump, they've put two humps in with a narrow strip in the middle, and the two humps are basically done at a width to accommodate the axle of the fire trucks, so that the fire trucks can proceed through, but vehicles actually still have to slow down. From what I understand from the ward councillor, it's been successful. I know a resident living on the street, it's been successful, and in speaking with Waterloo staff, while obviously from an operations point of view, nobody ever likes vertical inflection in terms of snow removal, it's worked well. And that's, I've heard that both from the staff and the resident. I'm wondering, have we looked at this yet here? And if not, can we look at this, and can this be a possible solution for our speed bumps going forward to address the fire concern?
I'm not sure if it's the chief or our operational people that can speak to that, so...
I can start, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Through you to councillor Vanadis. We have worked with transportation planning several months ago when we're dealing with the Glasgow, Glasgow Street issue, and looking at different configurations that we might be able to consider in that area. And I believe, I can't be 100% sure if we've actually done the practical testing on that, because I'm not sure that we actually got to a final design, but we had been working on various models that may work better for our response. You know, I encourage any better model out there that will allow us to continue our response at normal speeds.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding from having spoken with staff previously was that operations were averse to it, and we didn't look at it, but that was before Waterloo had any experience with it. So I guess my question is, now that they have had experience, I'm wondering if we can actually look at it and potentially implement something similar.
Just going to interject, councillor Fernandes, he's saying that there is a situation like this in your ward? Which street?
That's correct. On Pioneer Drive, we have two, what they call speed cushions, although they're slightly offset, and a flexi-stake running down the middle. The intention is so that our fire trucks can go down the centre of the roadway. The problem has, what is occurring is that the flexi-stakes are continuously being taken out by our fire trucks. So we've had to replace eight of those. But I believe that the response times have improved.
That's a different solution. That's something a little different, so we'll come back to that again. So, Mr. Wilmer.
Council may wish to hear from Mr. Redmond on this matter.
Okay. And, that's interesting, you've got Mr. Beckett's microphone.
Yes, to you, Mr. Mayor. I am actually sat in his chair, didn't realize this was on his seat. This is my first time I counsel.
Go ahead.
We would be happy to explore alternate designs that accommodate fire and operations. So there are alternate methods that do work, other than standard speed humps, and we're happy to explore those and work with other staff on those designs.
Okay. Were you finished, councillor Vanadis?
I am. Well, other than, I guess, I will say that I will support the recommendation that's before us, I think it's gone through the process, there's been significant community consultation for many of the reasons that councillor Gazola spoke of, I will be supporting it.
Okay, councillor Janowski.
Yes, thank you. Again, with all traffic calming issues, they always become a challenge to make a decision as to whether to support it or not, there's always good arguments on either side of the argument. Look at the statistics, and then I look at other ones that we've had over the years, we seem to be approving them, and I'm just wondering that over a period of time, we'll probably have traffic calming, speed bumps practically every street in the city, that just will defeat the whole purpose in the end. So, having said that, and I really appreciate the delegation who just spoke on the matter this evening and provided some excellent comments on that, that different perspective, which I thought was well-taken. So I'm not prepared to support this traffic calming based on those comments and where we're going with it.
No, 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 no. No demonstration or applause in the House of Chambers. Okay, that is the end of the speakers. We now, yes, since you're the mover, you may.
Speed, traffic calming is not an easy, definitely not an easy issue to deal with, but at the end of the day, I think the primary concern that we as politicians have to look at are the individuals who have to live on that street. As, I know there are others that live on the side streets are affected, but they're not nearly as affected as the ones who have to, who live on that street and witness all the infractions. And I just also wanted to thank Tom and Irene for coming in and, you know, showing what their concerns were, and that's it.
Thank you. Okay, motion is on the floor. Recorder votes been called for. I'd like to say that I have expressed concerns at the committee with speed humps, period, and the way we're going, in the direction that we are going. I will support this on the basis that there will be a modification that will allow the emergency vehicles to not have to slow down at the basis that they are at the present time. So...
To move that question as well, modifications, because I really like that.
Well, we don't know what they are yet. If you wish to, we don't know what those modifications could be, but, so that they are at least investigated, if you would like to...
Yes, I would like to see that if there is alternative methods, such as councillor Vanadis mentioned in Waterloo, that they investigate those options and try to implement them on this one, if they are.
All right. So with that understanding, then, recorder votes been called for. That motion is carried. Okay, we will, so that takes care of the issue related to Highview. We now have some delegations related to, item number seven, on the same report, and this is from Morrison Road. First delegation is Dan Graham. Welcome, Dan. As always, you have five minutes to speak.
Thanks. Mayor Zaire and council, thanks for having me back again today. My name is Dan Graham, and I live in Chicabe here in the city of Kitchener, and we have a dwindled group now here behind us from the Chicabe area who oppose the speed bumps offered on Morrison Road. As I mentioned the last time I was here at the committee meeting, our concern, our number one concern is safety, and if speeding was a proven real issue, and speed bumps were the answer, I'm sure everybody in our group would be for it. Not only do we have over 20, or had 25 or 30 people here today, we also have over 100 people as part of our group that we represent. The issue for residents on Morrison Road is really an issue of volume, and it has been going back for a number of years. The traffic studies that were quoted were done in 2011, and that's before the Fairway Road Bridge extension over to Cambridge was finished. And of course, the traffic through Morrison Road at that time was quite heavy. The traffic volume has went down since. Again, our objection to this is because of safety, and this is a volume issue, and vertical deflection is not an answer for volume. EMS is opposed to it, and although councillor Vanadis has made a great comment about having speed humps that are fire truck friendly, what are we going to do for EMS vehicles with ambulances? Every 30 seconds, as an ambulance takes to go over a speed bump, is another 30 seconds that if somebody's having a heart attack, 30 seconds can make the difference of life and death when you're looking to an ambulance getting there. And God forbid that it be a member of your family that has an ambulance delayed by a speed bump. There is no proof that speed is an issue here, and that's really what I need to hammer home to you. Police did 45 hours of speed enforcement on Morrison Road at what is known as the fastest spot, and they got, they wrote two tickets, and the fastest speed was 60 kilometers an hour. So here's what we're asking for. The city has, city staff has suggested a raised crosswalk by Freeport Hospital. Everybody in our group supports that. Why? Because that's a safety issue. I drive over that every day, going down to King's Street to go towards the 401. I drive that every day. I'm happy to go over a speed bump accelerated, raised crosswalk at that point, because that's a safety issue. That's a bad corner, and I think that's needed. Second of all, I think we believe that the proposed crosswalk at the park is not a bad idea. It's not a heavily crossed area, believe it or not, but we can understand the need or the desire to have a crosswalk there. What we're suggesting is instead of a raised crosswalk, have a flat crosswalk, at least for a year or two until it can be determined whether a flat crosswalk is doing the job, and also have the road pinched where the road is narrower through that crosswalk. That's just as effective. Now, going back to the areas of speed, that area between the four-way stop and the first curve on Chicabe near the entrance of the ski hill, that was the point where people think the speed is the worst. This crosswalk is about three-quarters into that. So from the four-way stop to the curb, there will now be, there would then be a crosswalk, and if the curbs are pinched in, the road is narrowed, that's going to significantly reduce the speed of the traffic. As councillor Fernandez pointed out at that committee report, back when Chicabe was designed as a residential...
Your time is, your time is up? So, are there any, yes, there is a question. Councillor Vanadis.
No, sorry, I didn't have a question.
All right. Are there other questions? And for Mr. Graham. Seeing none?
Thanks.
There are two other delegations. Rajar Lupaya, do I have that? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lupaya was here earlier. He had to leave. Council will recall that he was here at committee, and he just asked me to reiterate the points he made at committee, which were that they support the revised recommendation, which is the one on your yellow sheets for the area down by Freeport Hospital, and they support the recommendations.
Okay. Third delegation, then, is Neil Dietrich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and my concerns. I'm a delegation of one. I live on Morrison Road, right near the entrance to Chicabe, the ski hill entrance there. I want you to be aware that the size of my contingent is reflective of my demographic. I'm young, I have a very young family, and putting kids to bed for a 7 o'clock meeting, there's many who support what I'm about to say, and they're in your fellow councillor's situation. They couldn't come today, so I'm a delegation of one with much support, I can advise you of that. Obviously, the concern for Morrison Road residents is for the people who use Morrison Road as a shortcut to get from King to Fairway and vice versa, and the people who are using that then, to then go across Fairway Road. I disagree with the prior contingent that has suggested that the volume, since the bridge has been open, has decreased. My view, living on that road, is that, and seeing it, the volume drive by my house every day, is that in fact, it has increased because people are using Morrison Road instead of the River Road and Fairway to then take a shortcut through, avoiding essentially what would be two sets of lights and getting through that way. So that's the main issue. If you look at the map of the subdivision, you will see that Grand River Boulevard, which is essentially like a collector for many of the side streets, is another alternate route. And I'll be the first to admit that it is a more lengthy alternate route. But if I were to live on one of the far-end windot, for example, and I were to take Morrison Road to get out to, say, to go towards the mall, versus taking the longer route, which is Grand River Boulevard, the difference is 200 meters. Okay, so it's an extra 200 meters. If you're driving the speed limit, that's 14 seconds. I'm willing to bet that service vehicles, when they're responding to a call, are not driving the speed limit, they're probably driving a little bit faster. So in the grand scheme of service response times, we're looking at maybe 14 seconds, probably less. The statistics that you have, as the prior delegation said, they don't reflect the bridge being opened, and I don't think that those statistics were taken, I could be wrong on this, but I don't think those statistics were taken between December and March. And again, I could be wrong. And the traffic on Morrison Road and the speed... And, and the, the traffic on Morrison Road and the speed possibly is much greater because of the ski hill. It's just a natural function of our neighborhood. So that's another thing to consider. I'd really implore you to adopt the, the plan. I believe there was a 65% support for the proposed plan. That includes a speed bump right at the mouth of the entrance to Chicopee Ski Hill. I think that's important to have that speed bump there as well, as opposed to, as opposed to removing it for whatever reason. The, anyone who is essentially using it as a shortcut would have to go through three speed bumps and a raised crosswalk. Anyone who is a resident in the area would at most, under the proposed plan, if they decided not to take an alternate route, have to go over, I believe at most, two humps or a raised crosswalk and one hump. So in my, in my, in my view and in my opinion, I think we need to remember that in the totality of things, driving, driving's a privilege. It's a highly regulated event, and, and safeties are right. Safety should be a right here. And, and it can be framed either way, but I think we need to remember that. And I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you listening to me tonight.
Thank you very much. I was just looking in the report to see if there, there was a date there for the actual count, and I couldn't spot it. But perhaps someone has that information. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. Apologize, I did not get your first name again.
It's Neil.
Neil, thank you, Neil. You heard the previous delegation and what you, you heard some of his suggestions around creating a pinch point at some of the crosswalks as a, as an alternative to crap, to, to the speed humps. Is that something that you would see as a, as a positive move forward, instead of using speed humps all the way across along the area, that we use a variety of different ways of calming the traffic?
Well, I think that, right where, I think where he's proposing, that going into the park, there's another speed hump in the plan that's proposed, not very far up the road, going, going towards the four-way stop. And to have both of those raised, I would agree with him. I would think that that's maybe some overkill, right? And maybe pinching the road, or, or maybe you have one of those light-activated crosswalks where it's flat, and then you have the flashing lights. So I mean, I think, I think it's overkill if you're going to have a raised sidewalk and a speed hump. I mean, remember, I live on that road. I'm going to have to be driving over all these speed bumps every day unless I, again, decide to go an alternate route. So, I mean, I don't think that's, I think that's a, a good compromise, but I don't think it should be the only, the only thing in, in the overall plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Justin, do you know the date that the, the count was taken?
To, Mr. Mayor, yes, I do know the date. It was between April 20th and April 26th, 2012.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Inas. The, this item is number seven on the committee report. However, it was deferred, referred to this committee meeting. So we're, we're back with the original motion that is on there. If you would wish to-
By myself, that consider, and seconded by Counselor Verbanovic, that the consideration of the following recommendation contained in Infrastructure Services Department Report INS-13-064 pertaining to Morrison Road traffic calming be, be referred to this meeting, to allow for an opportunity for dialogue and whatever. That the traffic measure proposed for Morrison Road are that three speed humps be installed on Morrison Road between Grand River Boulevard and Sims Estate Drive, and that one raised crosswalk be installed on Morrison Road at the trail crossing between Grand River Boulevard and Quint Crescent, and that one raised crosswalk be installed on Morrison Road in the area of Grand River Transit Bus Stop at the rear of Grand River Hospital, and that sidewalk be installed along the frontage of 75, 79, and 83 Morrison Road to the existing sidewalk on Morrison Road in the rear of Grand River Hospital, and further, that sidewalk be installed along the side lot of 80 Morrison Road to the proposed raised crosswalk near the Grand River Transit Bus Stop on Morrison Road.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Now, some discussion, Counselor Verbanovic.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And just before I make my, my comments, I just want to touch on the issue of date because after meeting with the residents, I did ask staff what, if that was the correct date, the 2011? And in fact, they confirmed for me that the date was 2012. The, the date that was on the display board at the second PIC, there was a typo and it said 2011 instead of 2012, but the actual readings were in 2012. So I think that clarification needs to be made for the, the sake of the residents here. Moving on to my comments, without a doubt, this is a difficult decision. I think, you know, we always try to find a solution that's a win-win, but while, and while not always possible, it's certainly a goal in terms of how I approach things. And I think many around this horseshoe approach things in the same way. And I think in this instance, both myself and, and staff tried to, tried to do the same thing. As a city, we have a process that's worked for many years that engages the community. It might not be perfect, but it's worked, and it's made numerous streets throughout our city slower and safer. The process provides for area residents to be engaged, and in the end allows those residents directly affected, those abutting the proposed measures, to vote on it. As per the process, 57.3% responded, the people along Morrison Road, and of that, 68.4% voted in favor of this option. There were three options that were available at the second PIC. It was narrowed down to the one, and, and those were the numbers that people responded in the survey to. I know that some, including the, the residents from Wyandotte and, and others, have called the process into question around what role and what say should people on surrounding streets have versus those on the directly affected street. And I understand that, and I think it is a, a valid argument that deserves further discussion. Discussion that's going to happen is part of the review that Mr. Carmichael talked about at committee last week. I think at, at this point in time, we have a process that's worked. This isn't the first time we're using this process. It's worked for numerous years, for numerous traffic calming implementations, and I believe it's appropriate to continue with that approach and process in this particular instance. In considering the recommendation, I personally weighed the process. I looked at the information provided by residents, concerns of two groups, one by the Freeport group and why, one by the Wyandotte residents. In my mind, you know, when, when staff and I met with the group on, down by Freeport Hospital, the residents made some suggestions, and those suggestions were able to be implemented. In this instance, I understand, while I understand where the residents are coming from, for me, the fundamental compelling argument was one of, of safety. And I think this is where the facts are important. At the fastest point on the street, 85% of the vehicles were doing 60 or less, but that means 15% of the vehicles at that point were doing more than 60. And that amounts to about 300 cars going faster daily. Looking at the actual, how that breaks down in, in detail on the study, on a, if you average it out on a daily basis, because it's calculated over six days, it works out to approximately 215 vehicles doing 65 kilometers an hour, 64 doing 70 kilometers an hour, 16 doing 75, and some going up to as high as 100 actually. I also went and, and looked at, you know, what other options are, are available to people. One of the delegations mentioned the, the other route around Grand River Boulevard being an option. I timed what the impact would be, as much as you can try to estimate what the impact will be when the actual speed bump's not there, but I, I tried to do that. And to go from Chicopee Ski Hill to Grand River Boulevard would result in about another 25 seconds in, in, in travel time. So when I weighed all those things out, at, at the end of the day, for me, the most compelling issue was, was the traffic safety issue. And looking at the number of new young families that are moving onto Morrison Road, at the end of the day, I want to make sure that, that any chances of, of an incident are as minimized as possible, and I think the recommendation before us does that.
Counselor Glenn Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe that we may be close to a solution, but I can't support this recommendation. I, I sympathize with the, the residents on Morrison, but I, I think that we have some legitimate concerns that have been expressed tonight. As well, we have one delegation who himself thinks that there might be too many speed bumps here. So I think that we need to ask staff to revisit this. I don't think that we're, we're quite there yet. This is a lot of speed bumps, and I'm not convinced that, I mean, we, we have talked about stepping back from the looking at speed bumps, vertical deflection, sorry, and, and looking at this holistically. And we've had two issues tonight. I supported the first one because of the, the qualification that we would have an opportunity to massage it. But, you know, this is a lot of speed bumps, and I'm, I'm certainly concerned about safety as well, but the safety concern has been expressed by the other delegations about the additional time that emergency vehicles will, will need to be using. And there's no question that will be additional time, it's a question of how much. So with that, I would not support this, and if this is not successful, I would ask that staff work with residents to, to find possible other solutions that have been outlined here tonight.
Before we go to the, the three other speakers, Counselor Inas, I assume, I shouldn't assume perhaps, that the same qualification is being added to this resolution or motion as was the, the previous one?
No doubt, I think it should.
In terms of the alternative forms?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. In reviewing the, the information that we had last week, and I, I, again, am a little bit concerned that we are jumping the gun on this. I think the delegation made a, a great suggestion with the, with the pinch point at the, at the one crosswalk. The other delegation pointed out that it would seem to be a bit of a moot point to have another crosswalk between the four-way stop at, at Grand River Boulevard and, and that pinch point, or if, if that was to be a pinch point. So I really think that this is an opportunity for some interesting ways of trying new traffic calming, let's put it that way. So although the delegation suggested a, a flat crosswalk, I think a raised crosswalk is a little bit safer. We are doing a lot of other things along this stretch of road, I think, that will also increase the safety for pedestrians. And it, I've driven this road a number of times, I have friends who live out there. Well, the curving of the road really is a natural traffic calming, in my opinion. So I'm not going to support it as, as written. I do look forward to Mr. Redman coming up with some, some other options and other ways of, of traffic calming as we review our traffic calming. And until that happens, I don't think I'm going to support the, the three speed humps. I do like the raised crosswalks. I think that they are, they're necessary at the two locations that are being suggested.
Counselor Giselle.
Yeah, my position is no different on this one than it was on the previous one, so I won't go into all my rhetoric, but I, I do, there are a couple of points that I, that I do want to make, and I think the idea where, that, that it's come forward, where we can look at different ways of doing things, I think that should always be examined, and I think that's, that's good, and I just assume that staff would do that. The other thing is, these, these traffic calming measures have served us well, and they're put in place, and then, within a year that they're put in place, they're examined again to see what's working, what isn't working, and then there are changes that can be made at, at that time. So, and the other point is, yes, we're, the staff are going through a review now of the whole situation, and one of the things they are specifically dealing with is, is whose vote has what weight, and should the, the off-streets have more of a say? And I, I think we're going to deal with that in the future, so that, that is good. My final point is, that, and I have found over the years, that the, and a lot of people want traffic calming, and the, the majority of them are people with young families, and that's who it really affects more, people, people with young families and old gray-haired people like me that don't see as well. So they, these are the ones that are most effective, so I will be, I will be supporting this recommendation before us.
Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm a little perplexed and surprised that the same members that supported the last motion for street calming are opposed and see opposition to this one, where situation is the same, where it's a matter of safety and concern. The last resident, the, the last delegation who actually resides on Morrison Road, the concern for him is real. You know, the other residents have, you know, touched on perceived issues or issues that could possibly affect safety concerns as to the increased time for EMS to arrive, and I'm not negating that. But we, we don't want to negate or not reflect on someone that resides on the actual street, who when he backs out, that's a safety concern for him. When his kids play on the street and there's speeders on the roadway, that's a real safety concern for him. For me, when it comes to perceived risk and real risk, I always sign the caution of real risk, so that's why I strongly support, other members of council support the street calming.
Counselor Yunetsky.
Just like the last, the last application that we heard, similar issues, similar concerns, both arguments, on both sides, they're, they're well-taken. But again, I find this one, again, not worthy of a traffic calming. Where you're putting it is in the S-curve mostly, it's a natural traffic calming method in itself. I do like the improvements of the, the roadway improvement right at the 75, 80 Morrison Road, that, that sort of would need it, and if that crosswalk modification could be used, I'd, I'd be happy to support that as well. But again, as traffic, Grand River Transit has stated their concerns, of course, the Fire Department stated their concerns, and just looking at the increase of traffic calming all over the city, as I said before, will probably have them almost in every street eventually, so I'm not prepared to support this.
Counselor Davy.
I decided a while back that I was going to be supporting these until they were reviewed. I've stated in the past, I'm not a fan of speed bumps. How does one weigh the safety of speed versus the safety afforded by emergency service response time? In a lot of ways, it's counterintuitive that we go throughout the city and we put in all these roads so that people can traverse them, and then we go back and make them bumpy, you know, manner of speaking. We should probably just let some of these roads deteriorate because they'd be natural speed bumps. Just a heads up, I mean, one of the mistakes I think that we made as council, and I, I voted against it, but anyway, is we doubled the number of streets that we calm each year. About two years ago, we doubled it, added some money to the budget. I'm thinking at this point, there are so many areas that we'd like to spend money in that gets overwhelming support, it really, I don't like spending money in the first place, but it really bothers me when I have to spend money where 30% and 40% of the people who gave us that money are opposed to what we're spending it on. So I am going to support this. There has to be a better way than, than the way we're doing it now, so I look very forward to the, the review that's coming up. And one of the things I'll be looking for is a higher level of affirmation from the community before we go ahead with these measures.
Okay, those are the only speakers. Motion has been made and seconded. Court of vote has been called for. That motion is carried. So, the motion is carried that, as was read in the, the motion, the speed bumps and the raised crosswalks will be in- raised crosswalks will be installed. Mr. Redman, can you give a sense of when that would occur, just since the residents are here? Oops, your microphone. Okay.
The planned installation date is for fall 2013 for the three speed humps, and the raised crosswalk was planned for 2014.
Okay, thank you.
At the last meeting, staff indicated that because of where we are in the year, it may not be that any of it will get in until next spring, so I think that just, just people need to be aware of that.
All right, so there's a bit of caution. Okay. And Counselor Davy, on this subject?
Yes, sir, just a quick question. I don't recall, was there a firm date when the traffic calming review is going to come back to council in general?
Mr. Redman.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Our plan is to bring it back before the end of this year, before the end of this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, all. We now move to the tenders, and there are just two tenders listed, but the first one is, has been withdrawn, so we're dealing only with one, and that is the laneway rehabilitation program. First one is withdrawn, so we're dealing with item number two only. Mover? Counselor Inaitis, Counselor Gisola. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Now move to the balance of the committee reports. Yes? Sorry, do you want to put your microphone on? Your assistant has helped you there. Counselor Gisola.
I'll have to find them first. There was a couple of questions I had.
This is on the, the tenders that were approved by the CAO during the summer recess?
Item number seven.
Yes.
The, the, the first one is on the trail construction.
Can you speak a little bit more into your microphone?
I'm sorry, sorry. The first one is on the trail construction. We're, we're letting, we let a tender go for $383,000, and we've got $500,000 in the pot. I wondered why, why we didn't, and it was, half of that money is from the federal government, why we didn't try to get as meant, as much trail work done as we could.
I think there, that came before us actually, earlier on. Mr., oh, Mr. Chapman?
Through your worship, we did, in fact, I believe there was a separate quotation that rounded out that budget, and in the end, we are fully expending the $500,000, and we had council support to do that before the summer recess.
Yeah, I think we did that in June.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't remember that, I'm sorry about that. The, the other one's on 714. The, the project that we're letting go, letting out is, is for consult, or you let out was for consultants, for a total of $390,000, but there's, there's staff time of 112,000. I don't, that seems high to me, you know, on top of our bill for the consultants. What, what would be involved there?
I think that before, we had sort of a consolidated figure on some projected costs. Now this is broken out, so just the staff time is the question on 7-14. Mr. Wilmer.
Through the mayor. I'll speak in general terms, but certainly the, the first full paragraph under financial implications does explain in general terms what that's for, and does say that when it exceeds 125,000, we will break it down for council. The, the reality is, we try to do as much as we can at a staff level so that we minimize the consulting costs, and that's really why these are here, and when they do get to exceed 125, then we certainly will, will report in more detail.
No, and I read that, that, that this is what you're, you're going to do in the future, but I just, I find that it's odd that, that our portion would be such a great amount, almost a, a third of what the consultants are doing.
But I think the point, the point's being made, though, you have a choice. Consultant fees higher, or our staff do more work and reduce the consultant's fees?
Well, I would hope maybe why don't, why don't we do more work and, and cut the consultant, consultant fees down?
Was that, is that the original question?
Well, that's, leads to that question, yeah.
All right. Mr. Chapman.
And I believe the response that's been offered in the past is that there are two reasons why that's not done. One is that there may be specific expertise that would not make sense to staff up in-house based on the fluctuation in the workload, and the other is capacity, that if council was inclined to add staff within the engineering division, there may be an opportunity, but right now, this represents the capacity they have within that team.
Counselor Inaitis, is there something wrong with the questions I'm asking that you're?
Just continue with your questions, Counselor Gisola.
No, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're still on tenders for item number two. I should have declared this conflict as well as it related to the same one as I had declared earlier for Brom Street for pecuniary interest of real estate. My apologies.
Are you referring to the, the tender that we dealt with and voted on?
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Okay, Roman numeral two, all right.
Oh, no, no, not, that's actual number two for Brom Street, so that's not, numeral number two, that's actual.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the one you're referring to, is that right?
Um, for Brom Street, for 72 Victoria Street.
We did only one.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Counselor Yonetski.
Oh, fair enough, okay. I had a couple of questions to number seven, the one that approved by the CEO.
Okay, remember, these have been approved.
I understand, but it's just questions.
All right, which, which one?
Page 7-8, and that's dealing with the Sterling Avenue North East to, right to the Conestoga Expressway.
Yes.
And it talks about it being in two phases. I'm not, the second construction phase is next year, but I'm not sure when the first phase is. Would that be later, later on this year, and would that conflict with, I guess, the parking access getting into the parking lot for Kitchener Ranger hockey games come this
Mr. Wilmer.
Through the mayor. My understanding is, yes, this work is taking place in the fall of 2013. The degree to which it'll be overlapping with the hockey season, though, I can't say. I guess the other aspect of that is there are events at the odd, in addition to Rangers games, pretty much year-round, so whenever we do construction, it will have, have an impact on traffic destined for the odd.
Yeah, but that's, I think, one of the main axis moves to get to the back part of the parking lot, and I just thought it'd just be totally cut off. I'm not sure in terms of how well, what else would be done, so it's just food for thought. The other question I have deals with item on page 7-20, and that's with the Blockline Road construction. It also talks about two phases, and when will the, will work be done, when will work be done?
Who's got that? Now, now, okay, it just came up. Mr. Gross.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the work for Blockline Road is, is scheduled.
I can't hear him.
Sorry. The work for Blockline Road, to my knowledge, is scheduled for this year.
For this season?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just want to get clarification. That's it, thank you.
Counselor Singh. Was that, I, you're, you were still up here, was that from before?
I had wanted to ask about the same block line, but Counselor, Yonetski, that's right, he asked it already, thanks.
It's back up there, is it on? Okay, that's helpful. Keeps popping back up for some reason. All right, then we will move to, I didn't realize that Shannon was still here, sorry, and we'll move to the Finance and Corporate Services Committee report. This is item number one, the BIA boundaries. Counselor Davy, would you bring that item forward?
Sorry, Mayor Zaire, I wasn't paying attention because I was just talking to Counselor Rubanovich. We didn't actually vote on item number seven, the CAO-approved tenders.
We don't vote on it, do we?
In the committee of the whole, we do, I believe.
Do they? I think that's, Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Mayor Zaire. It is only for information. Council has given that delegation through the CEO bylaws, so Mr. Wilmer has approved those ultimately. This is purely here for information.
Right, that's, that's in the, the files.
Just checking, and what am I bringing forward, sorry?
Item number one, this is a BIA, Boundary Expansion.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh, that item number one, that the bylaw is attached to Finance and Corporate Services Department Report, FCS 13-124, be enacted to amend the City of Kitchener Municipal Code, Chapter 70, the Board of Management Downtown Improvement Area, to expand the boundaries of the downtown Kitchener Business Improvement Area BIA.
Okay. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. There was one conflict noticed, you were on that one? Yes, just for the record, you've got those conflicts. At the very beginning, they were noted, and so they have to automatically be included in the, when it comes time. Okay, we will now continue on with the committee reports. Community Infrastructure Services, Counselor Inaitis, just deal with the remaining items, and I don't think you need to read them. Can you press your microphone, though, please?
The remaining items of number one, item two, item three, item four, item five, and item six. Item seven's already been dealt with, along with item number eight, has been dealt with, and the remaining items, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
All right, they've been moved and seconded. Counselor Fernandez, you have a comment on one of them?
Yes, actually, number 11, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Redman has, has left. There was a request by me regarding number 12, the Huron Road, Strasburg Road roundabout, and I hadn't heard back from them regarding a portion of the land between Northbrook Place and Huron Road that they would put a pedestrian walkway. I don't know whether we can vote on that without having that information. I wanted to make sure that that was included in our review.
I recall you asking the question, and I can't recall if it was for information or, and.
That staff would investigate whether the portion of land between Northbrook Place and Huron Road was owned by the city, and would there be eligible, be, would it be eligible to be used as a pedestrian walkway? So we needed to know if it was owned by the city, and I haven't heard back from staff yet.
Okay, the fact that we don't have that detail, I'm going to suggest, correct me if I'm wrong, that we can deal with this item, but that specific part of it could come back with the information and be dealt with separately at the, the next council meeting, then?
Okay, that would be fine, because I don't think they're going to be doing all the work sooner than that.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be fine.
All right, someone ready to flag that one? Thank you. Okay, this is the Community Services Infrastructure Report. Counselor Gisola.
I just wanted to know on item number 13, if staff can give any indication when they hope to get a report back to us.
Mr. Chapman.
My understanding, Mayor Zaire, is that that will come back with the August variance report at the October 21st meeting of committee.
Thank you.
All right, those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. The balance of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report, Counselor Davy.
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh that the remaining items be adopted. I think we're going by numbers, so it would be items number two and three.
Yes, yes, we will vote on them separately due to the conflict. Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, I just wanted to, I realized that I had brought, raised a lot of questions on item number two. A couple of, one of the questions I had asked back then and was regarding what methods we would be using to engage the community, and I, I haven't heard back either from staff. Now, maybe I should be reviewing more detail about the Finance and Corporate Services, but I know that we've gone to more shorter agenda minutes, but I have that written down. The other thing I wanted to bring to council's attention was that The Post did an online poll, and 57% of the respondents either said that they said incentives should not be downtown anymore, or they said no more incentives, so that was 57%. So, I mean, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of council, that citizens are, are concerned about where, where we're spending our money on, and downtown incentives.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering about any methods for?
In terms, I think that was, Mr. Chapman, was that not going to come back during the budget process? Or, Mr. Wilmer?
Two aspects of this. Perhaps Mr. Chapman can speak to the, the budget-related one. In terms of the communications plan, I can, I can suggest to Mr. Bloom that he circulate council to reiterate, I think, the comments that he made at committee last week, or can follow up on to elaborate on those.
Okay.
I, I do recollect what he said. What was, what was said was that he didn't, it's, it's in the newspaper article in The Post, that he didn't feel that the citizens understood the issues, no matter how easy we try to make it, it becomes a challenge to get feedback. You know, if that's his stock answer, I, you know, it's unfortunate some of the residents aren't here, that were here earlier, to hear that. I think that we are missing an opportunity for some input.
Ms. Tarling, did you want to add something?
Just with respect to seconding of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee Reports.
Okay.
Counselor Singh, you're unable to second because you've declared a pecuniary interest with respect to item number two.
All right, we'll deal with that. Another second for the Counselor Etherington. Thanks for that good catch. Mr. Gross.
Oh, Wilmer.
Was it, who did I put on? Sorry about that. They're mixing, mixing up places a little bit tonight, and I got lost.
Through the mayor. In response to Counselor Fernandez's question about the downtown financial incentives, as staff, we will take our, we will take our direction from council on that. Council has directed that we have public engagement on the matter, and we will do so. Mr. Bloom's comment is that it's difficult to get that public response, but notwithstanding that, we will make our efforts to do it, and in fact, I would say that staff's emphasis on this is very much aligned with exactly what you've quoted from The Post, that we are not looking to invest more in the downtown, and that we are looking to phase out incentives. It's a question of where to focus them now and when to phase them out. So I don't think there's much, I don't think there's a, a big divide here between the direction that council and staff are suggesting through this recommendation, and that the direction the community seems to want to go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Gisola.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to make any comments. I made them at the committee meeting, but I would like to, you're going to call both issues separately?
Separately, yes.
And I'd like recorded votes on both of them.
All right. Counselor Davy?
Thank you, and just one question on that, Mr. Wilmer's last point in terms of looking at phasing them out. That was talked about, I'm not sure if it needs to be, I guess I'm looking for direction, if that necessarily needs to be part of the recommendation, whether we'd like staff to take into consideration a sunset, or if you're comfortable that that's implied.
Mr. Wilmer.
Through the mayor, it, it, it is in the report, so it's already documented on the public record. Either way, though, it's, it wouldn't be inappropriate if council wanted to put that as part of the resolution.
Did you wish to add something?
I wished, yes, I, I think it's important enough that we should. Give me a second with phrasing, but.
Why don't you, I've got another speaker, and she'll just perhaps take a moment to think about it. Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is for item number three. I'm delighted to be able to support this motion, and I think, you know, the media didn't pick up on this too much, but it can't be said enough that the hard target that we have set at 1.25% at a starting point, which would be well below our neighboring municipalities of what they are expecting is, to. which would be well below our neighboring municipalities of what they are expecting to come in or start off at, and with the addition of the further 0.25% reduction that staff has been asked to look for, would ensure that we will most likely be well below the rate inflation of what our residents have asked us to do, and that's a great news story.
Okay, back to you, Counselor Davey.
Thank you. I would add, then, subject to the direction provided by the Finance and Corporate Services Committee staff, staff present final recommendations to the downtown financial incentive review, and I would add there with consideration to implications to sunsetting or phasing out, it's probably a better choice of words, future incentives.
Okay, is everyone clear on that? All right. Recorded votes have been called for. We'll deal with item number two first. This has to do with the incentives. You can now vote. That motion carries with the conflicts noted. Item number three. Recorded vote. You can now vote. As that motion carries. Planning and strategic initiatives, Counselor Rubenovich? Microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Yonetski. One recommendation, that staff continue to implement the directions for residential intensification policies as outlined in the report.
Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Someone prepared to bring in the audit report? Counselor Davey?
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Rubenovich that the 2012 audited consolidated financial statements of the City of Kitchener be approved.
Did you have a second, either two?
Yeah, Counsel Rubenovich.
Okay. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Counselor Glenn Graham? Sorry, I wasn't looking at my list. Got someone before you. Counsel Rubenovich?
Actually, can you come back to me? I just would need to bring up what I wanted to speak about.
All right, Counselor Glenn Graham?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This relates to item B, 8B, under new business, and it's regarding sod replacement. This predated our council, and there was some work done on a number of streets in my ward, perhaps in other wards as well, where the sod didn't take, for whatever reasons. Staff are now repairing it, and some people have remediated their own lawns, and staff's position is they will not reimburse people to the extent that the city would have paid for that work now. My position is that we owe it to people, to thank them for doing the work, and to paying them what we would have costed it out at in today's dollars, not what they paid themselves, regardless of the invoices. I think it's a question of fairness, and also to respect the work the people have done to improve the city and their properties.
What area are you referring to? Are you referring to private property? Are you talking about the boulevard? I wasn't clear in what you were referencing here.
It's both boulevards and private property, and Borden and Melrose, and possibly some other side streets.
Okay. I have four speakers. Is it on this subject? Counselor Singh, Davey, Yonetski, and Etherington? Okay? Counselor Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a question to Counselor Glenn Graham. So, how many residents are affected, and what would be the financial implication for this?
Thank you. Counselor Glenn Graham?
I've had comments from about a dozen residents. I don't know the total number. Regardless, it's a question of principle of fairness to me. We would have paid for this money anyway, so I really don't have an answer for you about the financial impact.
We would have paid for this money anyway.
So, had the work not been done by the individual residents, we would have been doing it now.
Okay, so they had to, they ended up doing it upon themselves?
Correct.
Because we didn't get there in prompt time?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
At some point, we'll have our staff comment on this.
Certainly.
So, that's the question ahead of staff, but I'll allow others to ask questions, too?
And maybe we should, before I go through the four other people and yourself, Counselor Singh, perhaps you should have staff comment on this, so that makes sure we've got whatever facts on the table?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are really three areas that are affected, that where work is going to be done, and what it comes down to, I'm going to go into the likelihood, the likely reason for it, is the dry and hot season of 2012. It was, it's a combination of the weather, plus the region's watering ban on sod that is not new sod, as well as the ban on herbicides, and those three things have probably worked against sod in this particular instance. There are three areas. There's Melrose, Borden, and Plymouth, and we are currently working on Borden and Melrose to replace the sod in the boulevards, as well as along the front edge of the sidewalks on private property. There is Dixon Road, which was redone last year, approximately 80% of the sod, and there's Sterling, Griffin, and Liberty, which was constructed in 2011 and is scheduled to be replaced this year for very much the same reasons. I've reviewed this with our staff, with engineering staff, and based on our analysis and looking at the timelines, we feel that the request of residents who have done the work on their own, we feel that, yes, they should be reimbursed. The estimated value for a standard boulevard with some sod along the front edge on private property is in the order of $500. That's what the city would have spent to replace that.
Per property?
Per property, on average. We've also looked at a number of other things. We've looked at the topsoil that's placed. We've looked at the quality of the topsoil. We've looked at the standards to which the work is being done, and the contractor guarantee. And I can tell you that the work is being done to the Ontario provincial standards and specifications. That's a normal, general specification that requires six inches of topsoil, and sod, and fertilizer, and a guarantee for 30 days by the contractor. After 30 days, the resident takes it over. There's also a door-to-door delivery of a letter that takes place by city staff at the time of sodding, and that letter indicates city contacts in case residents have issues or wish to contact someone with problems. It's a letter that was endorsed by previous councils of the day. It's a standard letter that we use, that is used on all construction projects. There's an inspector on the site during construction, and there's a difference between sod quality or sod dying and settlements due to the settlement of earth. The settlement of soil which causes bumps in the sod is included in a two-year maintenance and replacement period. Sod itself is 30 days, but if the soil subsides and causes bumps, that's within a two-year period. We've also looked at future practices, what we can learn from this as a result of that hot weather that we had. And we believe that by extending the sod maintenance and guarantee period from 30 to 60 days, will probably not add a great deal of money to the contracts, but it will add a great deal of benefit to the property owners and provide a bit of a sense of security in terms of the sod catching on. We also, although we did not find any issues with the quality of topsoil, we did some testing of the topsoil where it was replaced. One of the things that we will be doing going forward is approving the source of topsoil through testing prior to its use. Unfortunately, there's no test for sod other than a visual test. Is it green or isn't it green? So, in summary, we believe that if the residents can show, in fact, that they did repair, replace the sod at their cost, we believe that it's fair for the city to reimburse them for the amount that the city would have spent, which is on average $500.
Okay. If I can carry on, because that was the question?
Just before you do, is this essentially, is it now a moot point? Is it essentially that administration, this is a management issue, and it's being dealt with and done, rather than going through all of this this evening? I'm not trying to cut off people from speaking to it, but it really is, what I would suggest, is now a management. They've made a decision. They're going to deal with it. It's done.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In reviewing the resolution from Counselor Glenn Graham, I tried to address the issues that were brought forward in that resolution, and to not negate the motion by any means, however, if we believe that it's an issue that can be handled administratively by staff.
I'm going to go back to the mover of the motion. Given the information that we have here, Counselor Glenn Graham, do you wish to continue on with this, or allow it to be dealt with administratively as it's already actively in the works and being done?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to let staff deal with it. I just have a couple of questions that I'd like to clarify, if I could.
Okay, I'll go with you first.
So, I was wondering if staff, if there'll be a letter sent out to the residents on that street so that if they have done work, that they would be notified. We can't expect them, having gotten the first letter that said, "No, they won't be reimbursed", to know that they can come forward now, so how are we going to communicate with them?
I'm not aware of the communication that has gone to staff, sorry, to residents who have been refused the compensation. If they receive the letter from city staff, we will contact them and have a discussion with them about it.
Great. If that letter could also say that it's their personal responsibility to water their lawns after the X date, 60 days, that would be really helpful, so they know clearly it's on them if the lawn fails after that point.
Actually, it would be, at this point, 30. What the 60-day is, is a proposed amendment to our specifications.
I beg your pardon, right, so after 30 days, then if that could be made clear and explicit in the letter? Thank you.
Okay. Given that, what I've heard, Counselor Glenn Graham, that he is withdrawing the motion, therefore, the issue has been dealt with. If there's any real burning issue or question that you have to ask, ask it now, but don't stray too far here, because it's done, it's gone. Counselor Singh?
Yes, I won't talk to the motion as it's already been resolved, but I do take, Mr. Mayor, some exception to the go-forward approach with this, as this is accountability issue, and I support that, and that's why I was about to support the essence of what Counselor Glenn Graham had in mind. But from what you're saying, that we're willing to compensate $500, because that's what it would have costed us, we don't necessarily know what the true cost to the resident was. In many cases, they could have bought sod at a discounted rate. They did it themselves. They may be willingness on their part to, you know, include some of that labor at cost or free of charge. So, just right off the bat, say, here's $500, when it could have costed half that or a quarter of that. I think we're doing disservice to ourselves and our taxpayers. I think, in my opinion, as we're not really voting on anything, would be to let the residents know that there is a cost recovery at hand. Please let us know what the costs were, and obviously, if they ask above $500, we can account and say only $500 is the limit, as that's what it would have costed us, but if they say $100 or $200, we save ourselves $300.
Yeah, that could be on the basis of receipts. Okay, I've still got two others on this, okay? Counsel Yonetski, are you on this issue? Okay, again, it's a done deal.
I appreciate that, but it's basically a question to staff that when situations like this unfold, in terms of the work that's being done, and the specifications you outlined in terms of the topsoil, et cetera, et cetera, in the end, it's a requirement that the sod should be watered for a period of time so it can take root. Whose responsibility is that? The contractor that puts it in, or is it the homeowner who abuts it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Under the current specifications, the contractor is responsible for watering and maintaining and looking after that sod for 30 days after it has been gone down. After 30 days, it is the homeowner's responsibility to continue watering. At that point, the homeowner, I should say, at the time that the sod is being placed, there is a letter that is hand-delivered to each homeowner by city staff indicating that after the 30-day period, it is their responsibility to continue to water and to maintain the sod.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, based on that answer, could both parties be to blame? Maybe the contractor didn't water enough in that first 30 days and caused it to go, or maybe the residents didn't do their share?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In looking at the timing, in most cases, the work was done in 2010, 2011. We had a very dry, hot season in 2012. After one year, typically, it's not new sod anymore, and the region's lawn watering ban comes into effect. Typically, it takes sod a little bit longer than that to get a good root system in order to withstand drought. We feel that the weather conditions worked against us in this instance, and whose fault is it? That's a good question, but in this case, we did take the onus to replace most of the sod on most of the streets. Therefore, in fairness, we believe that we should be all doing the same thing to those who, at their cost and time, replace theirs.
Okay, we're getting into a postmortem now, I think, so we'll move on to a different topic. The Counsel Rubenovich, another item?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to update council, and for the record, the issue of rail safety. Council, recall, we passed the motion recently, and we heard from our fire chief that... that we've had a positive response from the railway company in terms of a willingness to share information with him from an emergency safety point of view. And so that, I think, is encouraging. I can also add that the FCM's Municipal Rail Safety Working Group met on Friday in Montreal and basically came up with three key recommendations. The first being looking to equip and support municipal first responders to rail emergencies. So, in other words, calling on railways to do what our motion already did and we've been able to put in place. Secondly, to ensure federal and industry policies and regulations address rail safety concerns of municipalities. And the third one being prevent downloading of rail safety and emergency response costs to municipal taxpayers. And that's a big one because there's a concern around third-party liability insurance systems being set up to protect municipalities, particularly if a railway goes bankrupt, which we've seen has happened in Latmig Antique. And so those are the three main things that have come out of the most recent meeting of the Rail Safety Working Group.
Okay. I have no other speakers. Just to refresh people's memory, you may have already read about this or heard in other ways. For a major construction project in the city of Kitchener related to Weaver Street widening, the council last week at the region passed a bylaw which effectively closes the current Weaver Street for a few blocks to accommodate the detour route, which is where the plaza used to be. And so that will be effective September the 23rd. So, major changes there that are actually well underway now. Okay. Move to the first reading of bylaws, but there is one additional bylaw. I believe it has to do with the BIA. Mr. Harling, can you speak a little closer to the microphone, please?
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have a bylaw to amend Chapter 70 of the municipal code. Its purpose is to expand the boundaries of the downtown Kitchener Business Improvement Area listed as Clause 1 of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report.
It's been moved by Councilor Fernandez, second by Councilor Janeski, that the bylaws be given first reading. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Councilor Davy that council resolve itself in the committee of the whole. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Councilor Davy.
Thank you, Mayor Zaire. Could I get a mover for the bylaw's second reading? Moved by Councilor Glenn Graham. Those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. We're moving on to item number three, the Tag Day Request. Could I get a mover for that? Moved by Councilor Janeski. Any questions? No? Those in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Move by item five.
Actually, we have to move number four, room and numerals one and two only. Moved by Councilor Benovich, yes? Okay. Any questions on those? Those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Councilor Benovich moves item number five. Any questions? Seeing none, those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Number six, moved by Councilor Singh. Any questions on this item? No, see, question, Councilor Fernandez.
I'm sorry, I've got to...
Yes, just a quick question on what the uptake on these learning and development programs. I did meet with Mr. Goldrup earlier this year and he assured me that there are times when, if there is no uptake, we cancel the program. So, I just wanted to get a sense, now that we're doing another cycle of these learning and development programs, what are we seeing for the uptake from the staff?
Mr. Chapman.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You are correct, as I recall, Mr. Goldrup did provide you with some data on the last year, which was our first year of this new program. And certainly, there were some programs that were of lower interest and so in some cases, we canceled the program and incurred no cost. They reviewed last year's program in great detail and they have revised this year's program to reflect that. So, where there were high levels of interest, they've maintained or expanded the program in those areas. And where interest was lower, they've cut out those programs so that we're not running classes with less than full enrollment or canceling them.
Okay. Do we ever get a sense of the cost of the consultants that we hire and the instructors? I know it really ranges depending on whether they're an out-of-town hire or an in-town hire.
Right, the report provides the range and I'm just turning back to it. My sense would be that most of the trainers are in the low end of that range. So, it indicates that they typically average fifteen hundred to four thousand dollars. And so those would be for trainers that are operating likely multiple courses over multiple days. In the case of the higher-end cost, typically, that would be for something like the main event. And if you've been a part of that session before, that's typically the session held here in the council chamber and at a KOF. A large number of staff participate and that really is to cap off learning year. So, those would be few and far between. Most of the training would be within that typical range that's indicated there.
Do we ever do a, sorry, it's not an audit, that's not what I'm thinking. That's the first word that popped in my mind, but sort of an outcomes. You know, when you've taken a training on something, do we hear back from staff and from their supervisors? If it was of value, I mean, I'm sure we do some kind of a survey or, you know, a program questionnaire afterwards. But do we compile that to show what the outcomes of all those training and all those opportunities are for our staff?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, there is a formal evaluation completed by participants at the end of every program. My understanding is that that's considered a level-one evaluation and our goal is to move to higher orders of evaluation to do exactly what you're addressing. And that's to say, what were the objectives for the person taking the training? And how are those being seen in changes in the way they do their work? The outcomes from that training over time? And so that was a part of a gap analysis that we did a few years back and I believe that's something that we're continuing to move forward with.
Okay. I look forward to seeing, you know, being in education, you always want to make sure that what you've done is forward-thinking, but it also that the outcomes are what, and the goals are what exactly you had set out that they would accomplish. So, I'll look forward to seeing something about that in the future.
Any other questions on this item? I just have one, actually. It wasn't really clear who this is being delegated from.
Right now, in the absence of any delegation, really, council needs to pass resolutions to authorize typically the mayor and clerk to enter into agreements. And so, we do have delegations in certain cases for standard agreements. That's missing right now for these and so we're suggesting that it would be appropriate.
Okay. So, with those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. On to item number eight. Can I get a mover for that? Councilor Glenn Graham, questions? No questions? Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Item number nine. Can I get a mover? Moved by Councilor Anidis. Any questions? No? Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Item number ten. Could I get a mover for that? Okay, Councilor Fernandez, Councilor Singh, yeah. Yeah, Councilor Singh had a conflict on items number eight and twenty-four, so we'll... Sorry? Eight and twenty-six? This is number ten, yes. So, we're going to vote on items eight and number twenty-six first. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And the balance of that? Those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number eleven, can I get a mover? Councilor Janeski.
I'm sure this has been asked before. Apologize that I don't remember. When it's to do with parking, I know parking, we were able to piggyback on, you know, highway safety act and to, you know, almost force people to pay their parking fines. So, why would we have to write this off then? Just remind me.
Mr. Chapman.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is actually for monthly parking permits. And where we have transponders, we have the ability to shut them down so that people don't have access to the gates. But we also have lots where people have window hangers and they stop paying, but they keep their window hanger and ultimately, until we get it back, we keep charging them.
I thought it was fee or tickets.
Okay, no other questions? Councilor Benovich, Glenn Graham, do you have a question? Councilor Glenn Graham?
Pardon my morbid curiosity about this, but looking at the furnace and air conditioner, they're fairly sizable bills and how do we get ourselves into this? And, I mean, I know it's going to collections and everything, but what's going on here? Can someone explain how this comes about?
Sorry, Councilor... Yeah, we're on item number eleven, sorry, go ahead.
So, perhaps I'll respond, Mr. Chair. So, that relates to agreements that we have under our appliance financing program. So, kitchen utilities will basically pay to have the item installed and recover that through financing fees. In most cases, these are properties that are going to power of sale. People are defaulting on mortgages, the bank is reposessing. And there's not enough value once that appliance is installed for us to actually go in and remove it. One of the changes that's been made recently, but it predates these agreements, is that we are putting a lien on the property and so before the property can be sold, the lien must be cleared. So, we're optimistic that that change in approach will reduce these arrears significantly. But it doesn't help us for these old agreements where that wasn't the program at the time.
So, we didn't do the lien before, is that right?
Right, I think it's in about the past six months that we've implemented that as a new process. Prior to that, these properties were not lien.
I'm glad we're doing it now, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, I just commented that I noticed that these look like they're down historically, which is good to see. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And the final item, number twelve, can I get a mover for that? Mover, moved by Councilor Benovich. Any questions?
I see one particular, I guess, on the roll, thirty-four down to forty-one. Cease to be liable for tax at rate it was taxed. That's not, that's not an error by us. Is that because something has been demolished? Because that didn't fall under the fire demolished or otherwise. It's the same, same person or the same company? It's nine thousand dollars. Oops, sorry, more than that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. These all do relate to the same property over multiple years, as you can see. This is basically an error from MPAC in the assessment role. And in this case, they had split the amount incorrectly between classes. So, part of the property was assessed industrial taxes, part was assessed commercial tax. And so what you see in all years is a reduction, I believe, in the industrial and an increase in the commercial. So, likely, there was no overall change in their assessed value. It was simply reducing a portion that was industrial and reclassifying that as commercial.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions on that item? Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. There's an additional item that was placed in front of you. It's the resolution to do with center block. Can I get a mover for that? Moved by Mayor Zaire. Any questions? Those in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Mr. Chair, I believe item two has not yet been dealt with this evening either.
Item number two? Item number two, I thought we dealt with at the very beginning? No? Oh, my mistake. Actually, I'm quite certain we did, actually, Mayor Zaire. That's remember, Councilor Singh declared a conflict. I'd ask the clerk. I'm mistaken then. So, could I get a mover for item number two then? Moved by Councilor Janeski.
Do you want to again point out my conflict?
Oh, sorry, yes, please. Councilor Singh has a conflict on this, so... Any questions on this item? No? Yeah, he's done that, yeah. Those in favor? Oh, a question? Councilor Fernandez?
Help me understand why there was no RFP on this. I didn't, I wasn't really able to find anything that helped me understand that in the report. Is there some explanation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The project started in 2006. There was work done in 2006, 2007. Then the results of that were monitored over a time and the monitoring has indicated that there still needs to be additional work done that some of the remediation didn't work as well as expected. So, that this is now the conclusion of that project.
And did we do the remediation or did somebody, did one of the other? I'm just trying to think. We have ground force environmental, Vertex environmental and MTE consultants.
The initial remediation was done through MTE consultants with a contractor. The current final remediation is a combination of city staff, city operation staff to do some excavation work, restoring, and ground force environmental, which does the bio-remediation of the soil. Vertex environmental, which does the oxidation of the groundwater. And MTE, which will take charge of the project, do the reporting. And they will also do the administration and the final risk assessment for any residual contaminants that might remain in the soil and groundwater.
Okay. And I guess my concern would be that if it wasn't, according to you, done completely or properly, that we're going with MTE again, help me understand why we would continue with the same consultant overseeing the project when the project still needed to be completed when it wasn't completed properly.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We don't look at it as a project that failed. It's a project that we tried to minimize the amount of money being spent upfront. We tried new techniques that seemed to be potentially workable. The techniques didn't work as well as expected. As you can see, instead of the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, only about two hundred and twelve was spent at the outset. We tried to minimize the initial expense to see how things would work. And obviously, it did work to a degree, but not as well as we hoped.
Okay. Do you foresee that we're going to be approached to spend more on this remediation? Or do you think that this four hundred thousand dollars, or roughly four hundred thousand dollars that we're spending here, will cover the cost now?
The costs are based on a detailed work plan and we are confident that the work can be completed within that price.
Okay. And according to the report, MOE did give a certificate of approval in 2006, 2007. Will they be back out on the site to give another approval? Or will they sign off on this project when everything is done?
The work initially was completed under a certificate of approval process. The risk assessment, in the end, will go to the Ministry of the Environment.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Could I get someone to move at the committee rise and report? Oh, sorry, I actually, I'm pretty sure there aren't any. But are there any other additional items?
Yes.
Ms. Clerk?
Resolution arising out of caucus dated this day, August 26th, as circulated by the city solicitor re-center block.
We did that.
Oh, we did that. I'm sorry, I beg your pardon.
But I have another item.
Okay, Mayor Zaire?
Yeah, and I apologize, it should have probably, from a procedural standpoint, been under, excuse me, new business. With your indulgence, I think we could probably do it here within committee of the whole. With your indulgence, I think we could probably do it here within committee of the whole. It's only a direction anyway, at this point in time. I had sent out a, an email to all of council with some background information on last Wednesday, and this has to do with the smoke-free sports fields and playgrounds, and the issue that has come up in a number of communities. And the, this first was raised by the CAOs in one of their meetings earlier this summer, I think, and there, there seems to be now a, a number of municipalities who are prepared to entertain the, this issue. But in so doing, the CAOs had had an agreement that should there be sufficient interest in this from a number of municipalities, that the region would, the CAO has said that they would take on the review process for this, so that it would be done on a similar way that the original no-smoking bylaw was put into place in 2000. And so the, I had a number of responses to that email from, from members of council, not everyone, but there were some issues that were raised in terms of how it would appear. However, generally speaking, it was something that would be, not even going to say supported, but interested in, in talking about it, and that it would be best raised at the region. So I would put forward a motion that this matter be, that the city of Kitchener has an interest in this matter, and that the region be requested to take the lead on this issue.
Second, then?
Committee of the whole.
Questions? Counselor Ravinevich?
Well, and I understand, you know, from your email, Mayor Zarek, where we're going with this in terms of potentially having the, or having the dialogue and having the region lead it, which I think makes, makes sense. I guess what I think is important, though, is to clearly understand, because the region sometimes doesn't do the most, isn't as engaging as we tend to be with the community at times on, on issues that, that are important to our residents. And so by the region leading it, which, again, I think makes sense, how are we going to make sure that, for example, all of our sport groups have some input into this, our festival organizers that tend to be municipal, not regional festivals, have input into this? Because there's going to be impacts potentially in all of this, and I, and I want to make sure that we don't, it doesn't get lost in the process when it goes up to the region.
I think that's a valid point, and that it could very well be part of this request, that the, in taking lead, taking the lead on this, that the region be requested to involve all of the stakeholders. And I, I think they would, but we can certainly keep a closer eye on it, because many of the stakeholders are those that we relate to on a regular basis, i.e. the sports associations, and they are primarily our sports fields. So I think that there would be a stipulation that all of the, be open to all stakeholders.
Well, yeah, because I, I do think it is important. I mean, you know, if you look at the sports teams, for example, there's out-of-town teams that come here for tournaments and so on, so how are you going to regulate and educate people from out of town and make sure that they're not getting ticketed? How are you going to deal with festivals where alcohol is present? And at the end of the day, let's not remember, let's not forget, that, you know, we're dealing with what, you know, while many of us may not like it, and think that there are health issues that need to, to, to be addressed, we can't lose sight of the fact that it also is a, a legal substance, just like alcohol is, and both have health impacts, you know, and so we, we need to make sure it's, it's dealt with in a, in a certain context going forward.
I concur.
Other questions? Sorry? Question? Oh, Mr. Wilmer.
Just through, through Chair Davie, just to clarify, I think the intent here from regional public health or from the other, other municipalities who have started to take action on this, has to do with sports fields and playgrounds, so it's places where children play. So I don't want to leave an impression that, that festivals would somehow be affected or threatened unless regional public health decides to cast the net a little wider, but I have no indication that that is part of the intent right now.
And I know where these conversations can go.
But that was the original, and I, what I am suggesting in the motion is that it relates to sports fields and playgrounds, and include the stakeholders.
Other questions? I'm not seeing any, so those in favor? Opposed? That is carried unanimously. Now I would ask that somebody move that the committee rise and report. Okay, Counselor Ionidas. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Ionidas that the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the, in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date, as attached hereto and forming part of these minutes, are hereby adopted and confirmed.
In favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Councilor Fernandez, seconded by Councilor Netzke, that the bylaws be given three, third reading. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Councilor Fernandez, it be adjourned. You look for your time. That not really.